Senator Muarulkol.
Senator Chis Ahitaya.
Oi.
Senator Kamsek Elias Chin.
Oi.
Senator Kubagi Kuwainabo.
Oi.
Senator Stevenson Che Quarte.
Oi.
Senator Frank Kyoto.
Art Young.
Senator Eric M Nakamura.
Oi.
Senator Philip Paul Leclay.
Oi.
Senator Che Udu Sabao Senyor.
Oi.
Senator Chan Biskubong.
Oi.
Senator Mason Yere Abanlwiips.
Oi.
Floridir Gray Mariur.
Oi.
Vice President Marco Eblaud Rudim.
Oi.
President Nokontz Paulès.
Oi.
Mr. President Ariak Korum.
Ariak Korum bodontira Floridir Gid, Senator Mariur, on bolontigai gergid raurelet, Senator Mariur.
Oi, Sir President Manuel Tasil Tamerkaw, Arbekel Senators, ebodolomun raurelet, bura irum fur kalender gid. Akmum, adapted cell twenty-second day journal, ra fifteen the regular session.
Si gida motiona namdungeseg, namtirgirrogul gongel du oi. Tok. Namay Floridir.
Dolomulme President, irum five, ngari gyal communication, na President El Ming, Ariak Presidential Communication ten das three-five-six, atyanga protecting our upcoming election. Gyal ngariya Presidential Communication ten das three-five-seven, mulilutro lutishel Senate Bill ten das one-seventy-three ST two, ST two, lobengela PD one. Gyal ngariya Prescom ten das three-five-eight, reprending PPUC Board nominations. Gyal ngariya Prescom ten das three-five-nine, atyanga film adjusted line, rasel mo... Odoh mosu ederbe shiv, ai gyal absenti balo, ta ngariya belalme. Ngariya Prescom ten das three-six-two, three-sixty, three-sixty, atyanga transmital ra Presidential Directive Number twenty-das-four-two, leestablis ra Independence Day Committee. Ai gyal Presidential Communication, anmora... Ah, Departmental Communication, sumariya Departmental Communication ten das seventy-four, atyanga cross act report, el girela mandra July. Iren seven ra Communication, mrahusen main, de ngariyi, bura irum eight ra Standing Committee Reports. Altay makmum, buda adapted ra Standing Committee Report ten das two, two-eight-two, el girela Senate Resolution ten das one-ninety-five.
Si gida motiona namdungeseg, el girela Committee Report ra Brian Malirey, el mora PPUC, boguntira Chairman Senator Inabo, on bol muskida report, Senator Inabo.
Monsulangi, Mr. President, melu ilitasi, se marugul Senators. Atyal Senate Standing Committee Report Number ten das two-eight-two, ai girela, a report, ai gela Senate Resolution Number ten das one-ninety-five. Eh, resolution eh, Mr. President, tamu confirm ra appointment, ra Mr. Brian Malirey, el mutal mora board, ra PPUC, el mo ewar ra. Se ra July fourteen eh, etyal resolution ah, amle ra awla, oligamle asain, eh, meri ra Committee. Ma Committee, amlo, mister resume, ra Mr. Malirey eh... Engal Mr. Malireya, attilob ra Pala High School, emargonge, amlo ra School of Shabal. Nilua diploma, rira Civil Engineering, ra sel Yomi Rui, Romi Yuri, Institute of Science and Engineering, ra Tokyo Ra Shabal. Mang, se alto ra school, eng, ndilutal merbela, em ourior, mang kanga amle ourior, anisimat, sahuteng lourior, anisimat, sel Assistant Project Manager eh... Edireg al lo... Ya, we were saying, lourior ra nineteen ninety-four, elmo two thousand seven, ya Mr. Malireya, amlo Project Engineer, ra CIP Office, Tel Capital Improvement Program Office, ra blurbela. Se gida two thousand seven, el mera, el altay, ya Mr. Malireya, dirga... Adirngar CIP Office, ending lamomanager, atyal office. Ya, se ra twenty-fourteen, el mera, el ang, ya Mr. Malireya, awayal, acting director, ra below Bureau of Public Works. Mang kal, Mr. Malireya, Mr. President, tamlamoluin, eh, meraka, eh, experience, serengi, ra ourior, ma klama dangi, ra engineering, ma arulila construction. A Committee, diregal, amle sendra questionnaire, el mera, Mr. Malirey, algoro gera, ikagidal qualifications, serengi, ma experience, serengi, eh, diregal ulgirangilwa, ra cora undaswell, girela el mutal mera board. A Committee, ah, diregal, amlo ogirangilwa, se, ngarangora giltmokla, se ra, ra igal last four years, el ngia amle member, ra board, ra PPUC, eng ngarangomdasel, momrul, ra anexel four years. Ah, Mr. Malireya, atyal babilingel, amlo aysel, mla sing, hm, mal gonge, el mutal olngase, ra board, ra PPUC, eh, ikal last lewan rag, eng, amle olngase, ol, mlosapel, el mo, awabelawa, mo... Gutmakli, mo finis, mo gutmaklisel waterline improvement, se ra, atyal waterline, ra, ayra, el mor ourior, el ble, el fandaringiya, blurasaabal. Diregal mlosapel, el wa ODA Grant, lobengela blurasaabal, el gutmakliya masterplan, er sel goror babaldav electrical grid. El, el altay, etyagidal masterplan, awayal, blabol merik, ndibengila, ra gora upgrade, el girela sel sugumang moriya solar, renewable energy, amosap edal, mo odakkarat, atyal masterplan, eh, ngia mo, complete atyal masterplan. Diregal lo aysel washe, PPUC, el altay, ma, amlamommerika, omatmaklila, be derangira solar, mang, el altay, mengoorior, lobengela independent power producer. El, mosapela, ngahidal independent power producer, el maskida twenty percent, el renewable energy. El, tayagidal, twenty percent, el mo solar, ol tirak, er sel palasi, ra blurbelaw, el gire dal by twenty-twenty-five, eng lammo forty-five percent, the renewable energy, el ngara blurbelaw, ol to dar, adengi, mar otherbelaw. Mang, hm, lo aysel washe, al sugumang, qada Senate akonge, raringi, mangal mutal mo ewar ra, al ngara board, ra PPUC, eng... Ah, huteng washe, sel araladengi, ra PUC, ma aralalal, mama sewer. Amal magatata ngal, aralalal, mama dangi, mang girel magatmokla tarif, PS, el tarif schedule. Diregal, amlo masal, er sel washe, ngaringiya, awayal, PUC, amlamopet, arala, aalu, ndidimla kalonge, pisel afpaq, leng board, omdaswe, omrang, al kula sing, girela, olbi, ra kalulaw, el repealer, sel prohibition. Olbi, ra kalulaw, ai girel, ngubeti, sel stobra PUC, washe, ndi kalu, pa arala dangil morpap. Mang, eh, diregal, kanga, mal omrang, al washe, ngire dal gutmakliya, atyal Transmission and Distribution System, atyal grid system, ra PUC, ai gire dal, el gutmakli, mo OBS, batokakla, dalle, el gire dal, el mo change. Diregal omrang, al washe, ngire dal ruleya, aral mama sewer, el talgibal, mo efficient, mang gire dal ourior, lobengela... Akabelment, al washe, qada magarang, emosap edal, mongilabi, ra gyal bebi, ra ram, ra babaldav eh... Esapel moriya, ungil bomba, le kanga, mal magatata ngaykal, klagadalela, ram, ra igal, al blura, bebi, ra state, ra babaldav, ma yoldav, al direg. Washe, diregal, mal omrang, al washe, board, ra PPUC, ai girel, mo make sure, ya CEO, ah, gutmaklisel, el goror, ayra sewer project, el mommerik, in six months. Mang, nguram, ah, amle adadu, entiregal, mlor ngiya, ah, hiring, lobengela... Ah, Mr. Malirey, ma Committee, ulogir, el meri, ah, hiring, er se ra July dori, mra edeklo, ammalireya, amlo sapedal, adadu, el girel, sel araladengi, arala alu, ra PPUC, sel afpaq rate, el ngia, el ang, en seventeen point seven cents. Eh, girel, mang, talmerio, el me twelve point five cents per kilowatt hour. Mosap edal, adadu, magadamlo clarifier, al la, al washe, sel, RPPL ten das forty-two, el ngia Unified Project Act, ra blurbelaw. Ai gyal language, serengi, amal specific, al washe, atyal lorreg, da ra araladengi, amomongub, da ra October one, twenty-twenty. Masel after ra October one, ya PPUC, amal mimok, al mutal wa araladengil morpap, al suguma aralalu, am morpap. Mandiakal, girela PPUC, el ngaringiya, se bakre, ngaringi, el girela, washe, longingati, tayagidal aralalu, ra climate sense, leng girel meriora, ah, climate sense, ah, arala, ah, se gida, afpaq, sel aralalu, ra PPUC. A Committee, diregal, ulugera, Mr. Malirey, el girela, asel twenty percent, el solar, al washe, hm... Hm, magarang se gida, el mo, olurior, lobengel, atyal ODA Grant, tele, qada, o mesra babaldav, or dibl ol, madadingi, raringi, mang, ah, a Committee, ulugera, ah, Mr. Malirey, el girel, sel masterplan, ra, ah, agree, ra PPUC, il gire dal, mo upgrade, raringi. Mangulu ays ra, a Committee, al washe, ah, atyal ODA Grant, ah, kaltmok, al momo, al, ending, girel, la PPUC, il gutmaklisel twenty percent, el solar. Masel gutmakli, yang momatangaliya, washe, magarang, ah, upgrade, ra grid, ra PPUC, abol, ahamodeyter, tayagidal, el solar, et change, sersegi, del, el masterplan, ra PUC, il mo ahamodeyter, se, eh, nyam, u omu, la ourior, ra, tayagidal, el babaldav... Babaldav Electrical System. Eh, Mr. President, mang, aklotutlela, washe, ngal, Mr. Malirey, amla ourior, obis, ra CIP, akabelment, al, lamoluim, eh, merak. Eh, eh, diregal, es acting director, ra public work, ra igal last le ayra, eh, ngia, awayal, guramle, blol, meru, la ourior, el girela infrastructure, aralma, masuwar, lobengela... Aralma masuwar, eh, ikagidal, water and waste, I mean, water and wastewater system, sableda transfer, el mora PPUC, mang, se gida, el gora, ak... Aklama dangi, ma kalda alva, ilobanga, Mr. Malirey, aklotutlela, el sapel, ngosuwe, ra board, ra PPUC, il girela decisions, ra, il girela, ikagidal, system, sel PPUC, amlamoungara ala. Mang, hm, ah, Mr. Malireya, matangali, sel berede, la ourior, el PPUC meruringi, ediregal, Mr. Malireya, aklo, ah, technical knowledge, serengi, el sapel, contribute, el mora, awgil decisions, el PUC, amo, mengatmokla. El girela maintenance, ma operations, ma orrate, la igal water and wastewater system, ma electrical system. Ma PUC, amlo, mesra experience, ra Malirey, ma aklam dangi, raringi, ma sel commitment, raringi, sel rongul, el washe, soal olngase, ra bo, ra blurbelaw. Eh, e olengi, tam, arangalela Senate, bol sel gonge, atyal appointment, reappointment, ra Mr. Malirey, el mutal mo sewer, ra board, ra PPUC. Se gida Committee Report, eh, Mr. President, al girel, atyal Senate Resolution Number ten das one-ninety-five, Committee, malolngi, tanis, ra, rogul Senators, se girel, atyal appointment, monsulangi, Mr. President.
Reasualme ka comment, Senator Skubong.
President, mal masal, ma, Arbekel Ade. Omdaswa, Chairman, amal, amla... Mskida yero gur, toy, ma urere, lamay gyal, amle, ngal, Malirey. Hm... Omdaswen, ablurbelaw, di destal, ngaka, destal, merkegral, adalwaya, ngaygidal, weka Malireya, gumeseringi, manla... Mo otin, meri gidal, washe, hm... Sapedal washe, insalboi, kending, klo, arangalela, urere, girela blurbelaw. Hm, se, ngaka, gumes, ngakra, ndiaka, waya, tretelela, Malirey, ngalbetokaw urere, la, erdar ngula, bebi, ra taem, ndi, ngua klo, urenge, mergo, melmol, meru, la ourior, girela blurbelaw. President, mskida, tayagidal, blal, mu ays, la, ngiwa Chairman. Logiw, tayagide, Chairman, akulngi, tum, President, akulngi, tum. The support, atyal, report eh, ebay da, mu atyal report, eh, dolomulme, betokaw ourior, al bang, monsulang.
Senator Mariur.
Monsula President, akdiregal, mo, entire Arbekel Ade, atyal support, amal mura, atyal, reappointment, ra Brian. Diregal, mal, sel loten, me, per, atyal ontrul, birakulal, me, appointment, traktir, mal, support, raringi. Ukne, me, lo, asem, lariya, kla, dangir, atyal gasp, lengge, amle, madalakabelment, bongel, sel gombalil, ngia, meru, ra, tayagidal, mosuwe, tayagidal, sewer, ourior, mra, ayra. Akdiregal, mal, support, raringi, ai gyal, betokal, kla dangir, ngil, girela, ikagidal, ourior. Adi mo gora, adi mo otia, sel wukora, osunge, kal, girela board, arangalela board, ra PUC. Lu aset, amla, sel domes, raringi, amla, gora, waset, amla, mo, tiri, am ngadre, orur, atyal PUC. Akti olengi, tal washe, bol sapedal, gonge, raringi, melbor, abord. Bol sapedal, ourior, lobengela board, mal sum, ngaringiya, ngrikuar, amenment, ra la, ederelil, amendra la. Ma adalmo, si ol, guklu, direlia, planner, til, washe, magaral, orur, atyal PUC, el hara, si ol, morur, raringi, la kal, tira, motmuur, atyal management. Se gida, gumes, raringi, nawal, gora, ah, ngalsagasela, PUC, la altay, melengwa, board, ma, a management, awadil, dagal, orur, atyal gombali. Magumdaslo, washe, ah, sapedal, gonge, raringi, mo, melbol, ruun, la board, ra, ah, PUC, melbol, sapedal, adu, gidmatiri, domes, raringi, washe, ngra, sapedal, gutmakli, mo sapedal, si, siye, abord. Melbol, sapel, la board, el siye, a management, ra PUC. Legumdaswa, ikal, bekl, isu, ra PUC, il medu, magalmasal, da bekl, taem, adi, adi, litatul, a management, ra PUC. Makmal, ditmuy, geyide, President, olngi, ta, Arbekel Ade, washe, bol sapedal, mu, atyal appointment, tra, atyal, reappointment, ra Brian, melbol, sapel, mo full, abord, ra PUC, bol sapedal, mo uru, lobengir, smisi, abord, ma PUC, monsula.
Senator Senyor.
Ah, Manuel, afternoon, eh, Mr. President, Morgamar, rogul, Senators. Ah, Mr. President, ak, mal, sogalotia, support, ngakal, mra, ah, Mr. Brian, Malirey. Ah, the do mes, er sel, ai gyal, resume, raringi, blal, attach, mortial, el, ah, pabier, raringi, el, agire dal, gonge, raringi, ga twenty-nine years. Soal mo okode, ra, ngarti, agidial, el field, mal, oving, eh, area, ra, PPUC. Eh, sel bodongod, odoo, el girel, sel, dadalol, melkonil, tool, washe, institutional knowledge, mang, kaigidi, olaba, ikagidial, wayal, du, ma, akla dangi, ra, ikagidial, toira, water and sewer. Ma, akdiregal, mal, eh, impressed, eh, dakadalol, mes, awa, ikagidal, pabiel, mergidra, our appointments, el muray, gal, el Boards and Commission. Sel one, attachment, da, Mr. Malireya, a letter, al data, July twenty-nine, twenty-twenty, el murang, kaigidal, eh, Chairperson, ra Committee, ra Public Utilities Communications, ma Housing Development, ah, Senator, Kubagi Kuwainabo. Eh, ngo lo ol, taygal, mo, katmokla, sugumadagonge, raringi, mang, lamut, el mortial, eh, droal, el Member, ra board. Hm, sel page, two, se gidi, eng, ngo masa, alitya, A, B, C, D, mal, mai. Mal comprehensive, eh, detail, del planner, ngil, washe, ngarang, mo, omatmokla, ah, adalutal, gonge, raringi, mo. Ah, eh, liliang, sel, girela, a repealer, legislative, el ngia, olgabaya, PPUC, me, dekatsel, longesi, eh, le, adjustment, ra afpaq, ndingakidha. Senator Inabo, melon, magatakli, washe, la, el milkatmokla, dikmul, washe, ndi up until October one, twenty-twenty, mang. Therefore, abol, October two, twenty-twenty, lamosuwe, ral, el, lo, ngas, raringi, morpap. Ah, bi, tarif schedule, amlo, magadadu, el girela, soal lamutal, mo, rebisi, tersegi, des tarif schedule. Ah, sea rehabilitation, regel, grid infrastructure. Ah, adi, efficiency improvements, water and wastewater infrastructure. Ya, i, commissioning, atyal tokorakas, bang, ndi, se gida, pabier, raringi, ngado, merang, akmunga, dekat sapel, dekat ngartyal, PPUC Board of Directors. Le el altay, me, adamane, kmasi, ngaringi, atyal, ngar, alsel, say, ngaringi, Miss Eden Uel, Uel, ah, Mr. Reagan Baleel, ma Mr. Talal, ma Marip. Matirka, nga, angaringil, ku, kiwa, gyal, kakrosal, do, tira, ngar, sel, et, madangil, washe, ulap, PPUC, girel, ngaringi, kakarosa, expertise, tira, tongokra, alsel, sel, sel board. Mang kal, Mr. Brian Malirey, al am, kukmore, sel, engineering. Engineering, al, al expertise, el ngara, alsel, board. Maktimle, soal mo otia, mo support, ngakal, meringi, eh, mal, orangasulela, Senator Inabora, ah, mal comprehensive, report, lultoy, resel, amle, hiring, al, ble, domer, ngia, ah, Mr. Malirey, amlo, si edel, amlo. Ungil kadangil, girel, tayagidial, reappointment, raringi. Makdiregal, mal, mo otia, otia, support, ngakal, washe, ngirel, al mangay, leng, kanga, uspaal, le, se gida, kuk expertise, lobang, el girela, ourior, engineering, ma construction industries, ah, al, ya do, spe, raringi, el, el ngara board, ematmokla. Oversight, urere, la PPUC. Eh, ngaringa, mo, klam dangir, raringi, men sapel, diregal, domes, ra management, tayakora, mo, oiso, isagel, blal, du Floridir, washe, mosuwe, olngase, ol gutmakli, a management, ra PPUC. Ah, oversight, role, raringi, ra PPUC, as a member, ra board. Amal masale, Mr. President, atyal.
Senator Leclay.
Oi, President, Manuel, itasil, sel gorgaw, ma, Arbekel Senators. Akdiregal, dimo, obentir, tigal, lamoda, du, eh, support, atyal appointment, President, eh. Ngwate, agida, ule, gida, gire dal, gutmakliya. PUC, re langa, triyegidal, te del board member, ra, dekat sel, gutmakli, akworum. Mongulu, ashe, betokaw urere, la board, eh, dekat sel, magatmokla, girela, PPUC. Mal sugumang, ngo, ngatata, Brian, mo, mangare, langi, ngaygaidai, gyal, ourior, President, pending, il girela, abord, el momatmokla. Ah, huteng, sel, quarali, afpaq, se, lamom, medal, two quarters, il dekal, ourior, raringi, ma, aderela, blurbelaw, el girel, malara, agigrelo, ngila, adengi, maral, masuwar. Ah, awa, laksebi il, nguring, abord, da, diregal, approve, se gida, PS, tarif. Ah, ungerung, adiregal, sel, eh, budget, ra PPUC, ra FY twenty-twenty-one, adiregal, girel, momatmokla, girela, akworum, ra board, el mo approve, raringi. Adiregal, madela, sel, mo update, ra tarif schedule, ai gyal, electrical, and water, ma wastewater operation, el ngia, amade, eh, last, el milkatmokla, sera twenty-two, twenty-ten. Adiregal, madela, el girel, momatmokla, ouriere, la board, ah, ai gyal, departmental budget pre-programming, el mo, gavere, gyal, operational expense. El ngia, mal uspaal, ra, atyal, PUC, re lang. Madiregal, ngaringiya, approval of new human resource manual. The last manual was adapted, the set, twenty-fourteen, ediregal, magatmokla, meri, la, ma, ai girel, meri, dal gutmakla. Adiregal, real, madela, la, sel, PPUC Strategy Corporate Plan, atyanga, three years plan, el, el girel, meri, dal adapted, raringi, mo, mitra, gyal, position, ra PUC, re, el ngia, ah, amlamo, involve, sewer, and water. Diregal, ngaringi, accounting and financial policy, il girela board, el dregal, mo approve, raringi. Diregal, ngaringi, approval of new procurement policy, President, il girela board, el mo, oh, review, eh, o mes, raringi, dekat, al magatmokla, since two thousand-two. Masel outstanding, eh, ADB Policy Reform, el dregal, girel, momatmokla, eh, se mo, is a part of the loan, that PPUC is carrying from ADB, eh, uspe, a technical, ah, was a technical assistance, that was provided, in order for the loan application to take place. Ma, se, mandiregal, mal, tok global goal. Madiregal, sel, ADB Loan Project Document, are pending, el dregal, pending, ra madalabord. Ma, rogul, PPUC Employment Contract, require board approval, adiregal, girel, uspe, ra, a full board, el momatmokla, ikang. Ah, adiregal, ngaringi, sel, MOU with ADB, il girela, alone, il dregal, girela board, el mo approve, raringi. Ma, any project, project changes, orders, gombali, purchasing, legal, mokul purchase, require, over twenty-five thousand, adiregal, girel, motur, ra, abord, ra PPUC. Ma, giro, will, emergency project, require board approval, through el, board, management. Ai geyide, bebi, ra ourior, eh, President, listed, re, el, pending, ra, ah, PPUC, ma, la, ngar, meri, dal, mori, akworum, ndiakatsebi il, meri, dal, gutmakla, ikagidal, ourior, egida, amdekma, si, ah, PPUC, ah, for many years, eng, mal uspe, anges. Malo, ngitera, arangalit, atyablay, mes sapel, da, tagngera, Brian, trure, egidal, experience, raringi, blal, basa, ah, Senator Inabo, ma, education, raringi. Agumdaswen, ndiaka, daud, ndiaka, talgibal, daud, trigidal, rogul, kmasi, kanga, ah, adiakal, qualified, and vice, edal, kmasi, overqualified. Mang, ti, ngo, mosse, gida, President, olngi, tanis, sel gire, tayagidal, resolution, eh, mo approve, raringi, mosapel, mo, part, ra board, ra, ah, PPUC, monsula, President.
Monsula Senator Leclay. Senator Agitaya.
Monsula, Sir President, Manuel Odosong, Morgamar, Arbekel Senators, President, La Asil. Soal di, mosese, sel, girel, atyal report, ra, ah, girela, Mr. Malirey, mo, oh, reappointment, raringi, il mra, member, ra PPUC Board. Sir President, qada, ngar, elela Senate, make sure, ikagidal. Mr. President, kada ngar ele la senet, make sure ikal board ngari ngia akworo ra, at least akworo, if not full board. Mal ngo ngar nguda ra, eh, ta ka kal Inabo, mossebeel otobdi te al report, mo ra consideration ra ulal. Mr. President, ngari ngamal, mal te al reporta mal baka ta. Mal ngari ngel baka ta, position ra Mr. Malire, giril auror ngia alba. Eh, bebe ri ngia, mal pitoa problem, pitoa problem ra nga kanngi. Nding ngar ele, magote, make sure ngari ngia, eh, at least akworo ra PPUC, irregardless, eh, se mosse to mo, ngua solar or not. Sel ngar ele, da giril kutmakli. Ngaka disagree, say gi diel, lo marare el anga, momla te al solar, because I don't agree with, say gi diel teletai, lo bas solar may, so I'll skip that. Nding tara kan senor nga, Mr. President, kada mna orgadi, sel grant aid ra siaval akumisatya reporting, mta klik, mla amlo ready, si la twenty-seventeen. Say gi diel meelang, malka mantel time, egidatya mla mesa te al te al power transmission and distribution system, mlamostatal faila ma clo, el portion ser ngi, mmaqma da adengi. Et te adol tuti, si abol available, ngla teka fe, say gai gi diel problem meelang. Se diya gal problem, Brian. Issue gi di ar adragabal mint. El aka dak mulase, kador kadi, sel, eka do sigal do uli, lakmasi mka ra mo atter ngi, mte te al solar, ma agiril al mlar ngi. Toosar samadu point, sel mal disagree. Nding ramu aknasa na report. Abraham, na di tar tiga, mka sa ala, sel edel ngada du ngi, ya omra ra technical capability ringi, ra egai gi diel urior. Ma mal omra, kmasi ngiril mal mol, mla ngara board, eh, ol ngiter kmasi sebeel muta report, ebodongu ra senkyo. O otia supporta nga kanmora ti a report because of his expertise and experience ra ikal urior. Sula, Mr. President.
Sula. Chairman, Senator Inabo. Ranga sulle, mli giril te al malongi report ma, akumra ngi, omra wasi ndianga dispute ra qualification. Adi ngel tokil ngara page two. Egai ndiakal sal mka ta 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 tokil, giril mlamatmoqla. Nding, ndi kumra wasi alabong, entansbeel lultuyri ngi, kutmoqla igang. Ndigal list ra ikal tokil igaga, ba il agiril mlamatmoqla ewang, eh, imra karamla memo. Adi beesel toon nga, sel te al, te al ligera, te al gumil oldo ngi, ligera solar. Sel ligera master plan, se mka ta ta ta, rapo, mregal, madela giril implement ringi, tiri gal implement ringi. Egai gi diel ngara A, B, C, D, E. Kamisa ela tiri te al, sel i, six more month, te al project tamne giril mregal. Ulele el arra amal uving last year, el ankamisa, el aka dal mutal ngil six month, te amo next year project. Mu abla ta abuse ra, ra adra blura, bela, ma adra togunir, adra urior, ma adra irai. Gi diel te al dirgo uspe, te al turmal gay, eh, gay, eh, espil which is in waya dil gi di lo mulangar gi di, ma adra blura irai. Giril te al urior. Mang, akumra wasi nganga, omra lo ngil qualify, mak. Di do ngit malbong, el bol sebeel, lo mol, ma ikal tokil nga, sel te al babiel matmoqla. El aka dal utal mal mol, mal mo, omregal, ader fo, fo irse, koktul merbebe ra adra boardan do lo cha, egai gi di, ma egai gi da giram, omro ulma ra. Se adion tigle korak chairman ma. Altsu mndigi angot ebod senkyo, tirgeel roogul, gongert te al standing gamitira report, il du oi.
Oi.
Om tok, namai. Floor leader.
Mr. President, eh, the board senate, gamitira report, ma mu da adapt standing gamitira report, tendas two eighty-four, giril senate resolution tendas one ninety-six.
Si da motion namdu ne segnan, pokuntira chairman gamitim, bol buski da report el giril te. Senator Mario.
Mr. President, sulara, te al standing gamitira report, eh, presidenta girila re appointment tra Mr. Yov, Benjamin Yov, el mutal mo da la election commission. Mangamla mo btoal bel, mga informationer ngi, ra te al uror la senate, lengamla mongara, a sixteen years, sel adalt te al election commission. Kada mneel wasi ngaa, tiri gal mal ngarba vascoel, nasco ra uriping, eh, memurior, tiri gal btoal board, bla bla, dan. Mmm, gamitidi, siababier, el mori, wasi ngara, nguse go ngel mutal mal mol, mma mal, eh, uspaan, ma gamitil wasi oing go ngel mutal mal mol, eh, tiri gal alabong eh, mo sebeel longose, mo, oh, matmoqla sel, mo uli sel uror, mo giril online boarding register, giril auripabli ra, tiri gal of island voters. Mang tara uldas, ul tiri gal, tiri gal mla meri, a piramda la gamitim, tiri gal musao da ngi, tiri gal bol sebeel, eh, go ngeringi, el bol, lol mol, tiri gal bol lut, lol mol, mada te al election commission, kada mneel wasi tiri gal mal digesa, ra dar, elang egida alba ngar te aklo senkyo, eh, ngi atara aklo kla dengera, te al senkyo, mna adalt te al boardan, ltrum elol marra am, akul itar beklado, mossebeel go ngere te al reappointment, te al gamitira report, ma dbo resolution da ngera, Mr. Yov. Sula, eh, president.
Sula Chairman, Senator Rockley.
Sula, te al, eh, president. President, ndi soal mo mensional wasi, eh, mo omga taklil wasi ngal Mr. Yov, Mr. Yov, ah, angari askulil, teptoal aba, eh, teka sal madangaling gata, di madangali te al voice ringi, msel longodo odoo, eh, eh, daadil si arugodolorengs ringi, mongil arugodolorengs ra baka taklila, la gal stories, malu news, lo sao da ra radio.
Ke ka.
Mmm, soa blur bela, bol ngit, masi ngati lo ra, tutel mo, mta taklil wasi tilo ra Palau Mission Academy, nineteen sixty-nine. Eh, mila mol, ma rasculer, mlo rasco ra uriping, eh, tilo da sel Union College, eh, necaduate, ter sa nineteen seventy-two. Ya urir se, engnera blur bela, mlo omu ulagontant, urir, mlo newscaster ra andera domestic affair, eh, tiri gal mlo news director. Soa bolo dangar ader bela, kmasi ngal Benjamin Yov, ah, oldo, mngungir aurere la, ngari ngia askulil, malu ngila, background ra, educationer ngi, ma experience ringi. Isegi da soa bolo dangalir beklad, di nga ga mal, oldo, per te gi diel resolution, te gi diel report, bol sebeel ngua, la adapt resolution mo osedel ngua, msel kokpol nga, bol announce agikara senkyo, president, te dal utal, rongsi say gi diel, el sound, el ngia mal blolom skidel, el baka ta le, eto lu le ngo ngil otor ngi. Sula president.
Senator senior.
Amal musale, Mr. President, achmal soal o otia supporta nga kanmora Mr. Benjamin Yov, elang te gi da ul. Akla mutal mo, malgora institutional memory. Mga ta 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 langa, abordan, mlamor ngi, eh, experience ringi, lengamla nga, akla wang, general elections. Mlamo truy, ma elol marra, el adra board, eh, la election commission, two thousand four, el merela. Maldo mka clo, bol goal say gi diel, el wayal kla dengeringi, lengla ngar ngi matteka ta 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 ayam, sel membera board, ra ikal mlamo mregal, eh, the past of general election, eh, ngari ngel issue that comes up during election, eh, not necessarily tamagautu taqal giril. Sebeel egai gi diel issue, engle resolve, tele boardan, engle make a decision, el giril, eh, either, ngaramle irregularity, el obentara issue, for example, ah, kuram lo diakabalo, tamtamlosira, xma, eh, egai gi diel issue. Eh, eh, board maybe, eh, ngari ngia, tele, mla address, awayegi di, man piwo, se mla nga, boardan, matteka ta ta ayam, ltrum elol marra, eh, ngari ngi say gi diel kla dengeringi, wasi mil karal hendal, awayegi diel, el situation se, eh, especially el alba nga, aklo senkyo, mla meri, omatru, matalboi, leng mal giril al kongeringa, Mr. Yov. Mr. President, takamra lo ngila, sel otora ngarela lo, ngado du, mng, eh, nga kamle mregal, lo ai se, wasi akmor mor, tumak, ngal ngiter ngi, wasi ndiakame ma korra, on tirti al otora ngare, mlo korra rulia, kokora, atalgibal announcement. Eh, ya mal korra kasi, te al sebeel, nga gamembera boardan, mng. Guan ngari sero, wasi giril, teka membera boardan, mtsel kokkora marula, awayegi diel, luspaal, ndi, klo, eh, aralil, mra blur bela, aldong okra, election commission, board, alomis ra, teletele la senkyo, blur bela, eh, especially bi kos, el arra, arra general election, eh, achmal supporter, te, Mr. Yov, almo mal mol, mal adala, palak election commission, ma, eh, otia supporta nga ki, amal musale, Mr. President.
Sula, Senator senior. Senator Chin.
Mr. President, amal musale, te al, leng. Akmu wita se, what do you wish to accomplish, if confirmed, confirmed, to serve another term? Nding wasi online boarding. Ah, um, umra ngi, president, wasi, if you do that, then we gonna save tons of money. Ndii, te ngi, Mr. President, tabla do sao da ngi, online boarding for a long, long time, eh, akumdasu, eh, ndakwasi impossible. Ndikumdasu, lamman mo face a lot of uphill battle. Ma koradi, ndak, dimnak nga, heingi, mka, koradi, soal mo ndingelo wasi ngaria kuram du se lo wasi, kada mo, kada mo, kada mo, diang. Mmm, eh, nga ga, ah, gudur ngar ubagi, Mr. President, tak ti korra gikla, adu, ngusegi di korra wayal, korra mission, emri gonge, dponge, bo korra uli, kudu korra mo, oh, o question ra, se mne korra promise ringi. Sero, mung durin kuandan ngi, korra, se haru, gonna accomplish that? What di gri, emri ngon, Mr. President?
Senator Mario.
President, oni ma kuadi, galu, wasi mle mensional ngi, eh, report, tiri gal tiri gal mle, blad, tiri gal bladkan former til, ma membera election board, ma commission, adri gal say gi di, adri gal osengir. Ndigi damani, wasi te al, alabong, eh, bol matmoqla ngi, ndit ma mla ra agner olbi ra glulal, wasi mo angarat letelen. Akumdasu, say gi di, tiri gal, bas te al, wasi bo mreli dil gumilul kutmakli, msel soal mo, ah, kada ma online boarding, ngiril meri olbi ra glulang, matmoqla la, akumdasu, mora, atmura btoal bi, mossebeel musal wasi angari ngia, ngal se, ngel giril al kutmakli egid, ra ekabod ngar ngi. Say gi di, mandi se ya, tiri gal ta osengel ngal, wa osengir, tiri gal, tiri gal bladkan former til, mo da la election commission.
Bol bol, Mr. Senator Chin.
Ya, president, tak tal di, otongi ya, adal, ngari ngia vision, ringi. Akumdasu, ite gats, ma vision, omro, something like this, floor leader, mak panty, yoeng ringi, eh, mo support ringi, eh, say gi diel idea ringi, online boarding. Amal musale, Mr. President.
Senkyo. Sumdigi ang, et tiri gal roogul, gongert te al standing gamitira report, giril la Ben Yov, el du oi.
Oi.
Om tok, namai.
Da pokuntira, di, ga debel ulngul.
Debel ulngul, ngeseshen, ngi diel mora order. Floor leader.
Mr. President, eh, da, the board senate, luvon gamitira report, mak adapt standing gamitira report tendas two eighty-five, giril senate bill tendas one eighty-one.
Si da motion namdu ne segnan, pokuntira chairman, weishenmin, Senator Rudin, bol buski da report. Senator Rudin.
Amal musale, Mr. President. Mr. President, te ngar, senate standing committee report number ten, tendas two eighty-five, amal musale, senate bill number ten, tendas one eighty-one. Te al senate bill tendas one eighty-one, eh, submital radatoryo, longitera continuing budget authority, moso isra FY twenty-one. Mr. President, ah, gamitya, saru la report, eh, li lu, sahtoal, teletele la amal musale, ma omel go, mora way, ngarat se la report, eh, di soal matme de siarola, auror la gamitim, Mr. President, wasi, eh, ki diel roogul ngartian, eh, adi, kadi ka, kadi ka, kadi ka, kadi ka, mengul, aradro la badro al. Ma, asu, mwa, mlo ngi, ato, Mr. President, wasi, waya du ru ringi, korra obalatik, sel uka, kama mal, la isin, aradon, ndakal, way se, ndakal, bado tik, ringi, sel report. Ta igang, ato, mla do, mla oleng, saru way, mreis expectation, mla uben muta expectation, saru arad, lek al dosi shiutai, mwa, bo, korra promise, mra adra blu. Ya gamitirka, sero, omes, Mr. President, ngoltuyra bebe ra teletar urior, giril uspe, mra ulolel, ke blay, lo gi uka, eh, ngo gi uka, yang mra gamitirka. Mte sel momisay report, el address, mra adre, ndakal, danga la process, ah, omes atya, etya, address, mo ta ngakal, Hokons Paulis, president, president, ra omatru, olbi ra glular, blur bela. Sel bodonges, te report, tiri gibal, btoal, uli, longa ta, lami kutmoqla ah, la mu, ah, COVID nineteen, lo isakshikto o urra, ge isar, blur bela, ul tomal o urra, government ra blur bela. Mte report, Mr. President, ah, wukmo oti, uldu se la senate, rukmo da, se me mta kutmakli, continuing budget authority. Continuing budget authority, Mr. President, ah, wasi oing siwang, ngal teletar, ah, ngaramo, ngon me, kmasi, di do, lo mol, ma egel dimla ngi, ra ngaramo, me, il mo yu, da la twenty-two, il ma twenty-two-one. Ndikumdasu, ki diel roogul, dimla dang, kmasi, lam, ndakal, dosi shiwa, eli meelang. Basically, Mr. President, sel atso, msa, tamal, la sisva, COVID, mbol, to simra, baluwa, desoba transportation, ra, ra blu, mla, kango da, ngasto, eh, mlosso, baygelo, wayo, ra, audo du, me, omisagela, way. Ah, uluspe, oxiwa, wasi, ngal, mla ngarat se la tangga, el madegre, el altan. Kada mla mo meleng, ah, ngal, di oxiwa, ngarat se la tangga, uluspe, lo lu, ra government ra el altan, ne namodiak, say gi diel sisva, lela, audo du, loa, lo giwa, uli, al uli, eh, ngel revenue, regular revenue streams. Toospe, ngi, lo, oxiwa, Mr. President, el altan, egidangara borrowed time, and unborrowed funds. Mang technically, kada nga deficit, spending, lultuyra loan, egai gi diel baha ra, esel loan, abo hara ngia, aklu, kama ngia, wasi, egan next government. Mr. President, ah, gamitira, bakki diel roogul, mle expect ra, ah, continue ah, unified budget, el mlo ai se, mora way, kmasi, six months appropriated eh, six months authorized, or twelve months authorized appropriated, twelve months unified, ndigadi appropriate, ra te do, ringi. Se, Mr. President, ta dimla, mka kutmoqla, ya do, tirak, ra la ula budget, ngel meri July fourteen, selo, ngi with the boy, eh, ra, ra, regular budget. Mka dami ngi, ringi, a ul, mka damu, ngi, el altan, mle, rabayuri, mlamo august xengmarama. Esela, la mila, se do, lo mol, madimla ngar ngi, egida, madang, kmo setya, ngar ngi, negative twenty-three million nov, ngali, kada mlo ngi, wasi, me ki mol ngi, matmoqla, ah, FAA, se, deklo, loltirak, la, ngel matmoqla, funds availability analysis. Eh, Mr. President, ah, gamit, nga ga, personi, Mr. President, ah, program na, shaurerela, ta kan, lbu, sahda, ngan Minister of Finance, ma president tamir, mngsau. Egai, Mr. President, mtoa uror, blal kutmoq, ma ul, mla danga, government ra way se, warbeel, sel ba, akla, blu, urer, mka du, wukmo, Mr. Credit. Nditya, luriora, Mr. President, ah, diagal, tokor obalatiks, ol iba, tokor amlibas, ra ba, ta ra tokor obalatiks, leng mlamo oi, da tokor, o ur, blur bela, rogi, ma mregel, ah, adre, ndakal, danga, ngisi, Mr. President, ra atagibal ra ngul. Mka dam, soa da, bol baka ta, lmaa glul, wasi, mlamo oi, ma ul, ma urer da, mlamo way se, leng mlamu, geda, garygik, lo magas, budulu, eh, lomesa setya, mka ra, do, hori, ringi, alitya loan, abo ngia, wasi, geda, ma hara ringi. Et te a uli, Mr. President, ah, adigdebel, lusodel, maqmon, ngi yildar lal, mora rekel, senators, sete rekel, mla ategi ngi, mla dosvir, el longose osmo di, te ngan, le, kadi la glurur, roogul. Te ngi, Mr. President, ah, dimlu, sel continuing budget authority, te nomrekel fiscal year, eh, o ngan, ta gi roogul, eh, sense, government, ma ministry, by fifteen percent. Ndigadi dimlo, eh, bebe, ra five percent.
...minister of the government. This is not a small matter, this is not a small matter, this is not a small matter. The budget is fixed and it will be kept. While the government is not able to provide social security, it continues. And if you can't do regular activities, the government will not allow you to treat them. But if you can, the committee will allow you to do social services. And if you can, the committee will allow you to provide services, including hospital, education, security, police, judiciary, school, non-public schools, education. If you can, the committee will allow you to do. You will get more money, and you will receive 15% of the money. If you can, you will receive funds, and you will provide services, including social security and pensions. If you can, you will have to pay for the FAE. If you can, you will have to pay for the budget. If you can, you will open the door to people who want to use the money. If you can, you will have to provide. The government will allow you to do. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. The budget will be provided, and the government will allow you to do. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. And also, the money will be provided, and the money will be provided. If you can, you will allow. The government will allow. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. The money will be provided, and the money will be provided. If you can, you will allow. The minister will allow. In 2021, you will allow. The government will allow. If you can, you will allow. The government will allow. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow.
Senator reply.
Mr. President. President, the chairman of the committee is very angry. He is insinuating that he is not aware of the situation. The budget is fixed, and he is not aware of it. The financial system is not understood, and the budget is fixed. The president, the minister of finance, is very angry. He said that the pension plan is fixed, and the PPUC is separate, and the money is taken. And it will be kept until the end of the year. And the president, the government is not aware of it. But the ADB is not understood, and the ADB is not understood. But if you can, you will allow. The president, the committee has been very angry. The effect of the money is terrible. The government is not aware of it, and it will be kept privately. And the money has been taken. The money is not allowed to use. The agency is not allowed to use. This is not a small matter. The money is not allowed to use. For example, the president, the ministers of the government have received $5 million. The money is not allowed to use. The state government. The state government has received $1,200,000. The state government is not aware of it, and it will make a decision. The FAE is not allowed to use. But if the money is continued, the funding will be received. If you can, you will allow. The future of the government. If you can, you will allow. The committee report. If you can, you will allow. The committee is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. The situation is difficult. It is fragile and environmental. Economically, health-wise, politically, all of it. This is not a small matter. If you can, you will allow. The money is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. The executive director of the Mousmiga is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. The Mousmiga is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. The ADB is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. The money is not allowed to use until the end of 2021. A projection for 2022, and the Mousmiga is not allowed to use. The virus is not allowed to be vaccinated. The Secretary of Defense said that the vaccine is not allowed to be vaccinated. If you can, you will allow. Support the baby until they finish. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. The money is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. The president, the support of the government is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. The money is not allowed to use. The report said that the money is not allowed to use. The president said that the money is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. The budget is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. 2022, we can see the light. There are policies that we need to work on. The corporate charter is not allowed to use. Corporate registry is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow.
Senator Niree Bangl.
Mr. President, I would like to say that the Senate Bill 181, continuing budget authority. If we go back to the beginning. Several executive branch, the FAE, began in July. That didn't happen. Finally, the bill began in August, incomplete. The FAA was not allowed to use. Until August 18. A week and a half ago. The FAA was not allowed to use. The FAA was not allowed to use. The figures are not understood. Twenty million dollars, co-pro loan through ADB. Forty million dollars, OCR loan through ADB. Fifteen million dollars, disaster resilience loan through ADB. This total is seventy-five million dollars. Seventy-five million dollars, the blals. If you can, you will allow. The money is not allowed to use. At the end of the day, the money is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. 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 Mr. President, based on this, FAA, honorable Minister of Finance. By the end of this year, end of FY2021, there is 10 million. Ten million. And the FAE is FY2022, which is twelve months from today. It is not a small matter. If you can, you will allow. Which we have to pay back. We have to pay back. Oh, the executive branch is very angry. The star school is not allowed to use. That's the easy way out. The money is not allowed to use. The money is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. Expect the FAE, expect the Senate. The money is not allowed to use. The money is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will make an appropriate decision going forward. The money is not allowed to use. The salary and wages of the government is about forty million. I gathered it from Minister of Finance. It's around forty million dollars. With these budget cuts. With these budget cuts. There are eighty million. There are eighty million. So there's an extra forty million. So, if you can, you will allow. Please, do your homework. The salaries and wages of the government is forty million. This budget is around eighty million. So, there's still forty million dollars to buy. Fuel, hopefully not any more new cars. Hopefully not hire any more new people. Hopefully not go on any trips. You know, the meeting is not allowed to be done. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. You have to make the hard decisions. Okay, if you can, you will allow. Maybe if you can afford it. You know, you can make those decisions. Maybe if you can afford it. If you can, you will allow. 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 It could possibly go to 2024. So today and right now. The Senate, the FAE, needs to make the hard decisions. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. How much is it? Twenty million, forty million, fifteen million, seventy-five million dollars in loan? Yes, interest-free, principal-free for a few years. The sale or sale payment? Five, six, seven million dollars a year. Right off the top. Let's say tourism or other industries, the budget is not allowed to use. Mr. President, I would like to say that the report is very good. The overview is very good. If you can, you will allow. Pretend that you can afford it. If you can, you will allow. 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 The Senate, the committee, the social security. If you can, you will allow. My last message is critical needs. Health, education, justice. If you can, you will provide for critical services. If you can, you will allow. The rest. The money is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. It's not political, it's reality. If you can, you will allow.
Narian Oda. Senator Quartey. Mr. President, I would like to say that the committee is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. The differences are not allowed to be made. If you can, you will allow. The FAE is not allowed to use. The minister of finance, who was announced on August 18. Forty million, the money is not allowed to use. Fifteen million, the trust fund is not allowed to use. Ten million, the co-pro loan, the ADB. Ten available, the money is not allowed to use. Twenty million, OCR, January. Totaling eighty-five million. The budget proposal is not allowed to use. And twenty million. If you can, you will allow. The committee is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. Eighty-five million. The SS, pension, PPUC, the money is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. For the last two months, or whatever, the money is not allowed to use. The executive branch, the Senate, the House of Delegates, are not allowed to use. I would like to clarify. The Senate, the House of Delegates, the executive, the House of Delegates, the intention is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. The money is not allowed to use. Current, the money is not allowed to use. The money is not allowed to use. The proposal is not allowed to use. Forty million, OCR. Ten million, pension plan. Ten million, PPUC. Ten million, SEC. The total is eighty million dollars. The money is not allowed to use. The money is not allowed to use. Two hundred thirty-four million dollars. If you can, you will allow. Senator Quartey, if you can, you will allow. 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 It's a matter of when. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. Because it's the right thing to do. Mr. President.
Senator Udim. Mr. President. The president said that the committee is not allowed to use. The president said that the committee is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. Mr. President. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. The committee is not allowed to use. The 15% of the Senate is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. 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 Mr. President.
Narian Oda. Senator Agitaya.
Mr. President. I would like to say that the committee is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. If you can, you will allow. The report is not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. The Senate, the members of the Senate, are not allowed to use. If you can, you will allow. 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 It's time that we face a reality. Because the future of the government economically, it is not clear. Ah deha gal di blek. Makmal unstable, e gudba yu akumdas lukmasing mood al mo worst. Makmal ul ngi tra understanding ra bekel members. Na gamne senet tial reporter, lobengela majority. Ngutyal report with fifteen percent cut, ma five percent cut. Ai gel bebi ra eres ra government, dal akumdas wa se, mal gire. Me aim, tilim cc. Kodu, ubrengi amlulu lukmasing, a future belaw, kluguol mongas el pickup. Di ndiha sabed dal du li se confirm se. Edo mes sing deha ngaral, deha ngaral meral me. Ya rahta direk ngar ngi, etete lela ngar ngi il momka tegat. Momral gire dal lo, ogeso, olgasangalid, il girela klugu rikid. Malmasaula teale, Mr. President.
Senator Inabo.
Sula ngi, Mr. President. Mas al, al kunga bebi ra kamintal girer tial kamitiriport. Ak madangil wa se tia mri ngel ngara al. Ya ul magadangartal ol biragululaw, tegi di yangar alid. Sel bol mri ngal ngara al, egi da gire dal mo, mongatmoq dal ngi. Ma, Mr. President, angwa, hoten diswakal mo, ay sel wa se, mal wangra berredel tial ngar alid. Malu do mes ra kamitiriporta sel page seven. El mor sel tapra page eight. Sel page seven, Mr. President. En, mol tal wa se, ai gel local revenue rikid. Asera twenty nineteen, emle seventy three point eight million. Ay FY twenty twenty, en fifty four point eight million. Ya FY twenty twenty one, en dimo forty million. Mr. President. Alusel dongura FY twenty nineteen, el mora twenty twenty one. Endarap pa local revenue by forty five percent. Mong, sel kampera twenty twenty, ma twenty twenty one. Emo mes se sel local revenue, endarap by fourteen point five million. Se gi dal local revenue, amodi bus, el modi gal available, el merak government tra bluul belaw. Sel obora page eight. Edo mes ai gel financing resources ra FY twenty twenty. Eda kampere ngi el mor FY twenty twenty one. Ya aiga gi dal revenue amodi bus. Sel line of credit, del fifteen million. Ma sel general fund reserve, el fourteen point eight million. Ma sel compact review agreement assistance, al gi damilar ngi five point two million. Ai ge gi damodi bus, ai ge dosi five million. Ma sel omadori five million, il gi gi dal assistance, el modi bus. Ma sel fifteen million el local revenue. Mr. President, gi do mes ra fifty million, or shortfall, ra revenue ra government tarkid. Sel ombeis ra hundred million al pajet. Et ya tedob ra financing, tel hundred million, ah modi bus. Ndeha gal sabed al ngar tia ngi akmula se ndiha, ki da di mal mol malma, oitra hundred million. It would be, kodu wa ya, alagadu. Kodu refuse, el recognize ra klamarang. Ki da tial omes ngi, wa se, klo ngasongs, ewada se ndiha, di do oitra hundred million, ebodongo alon. Mr. President, sel omes se sel FY twenty twenty one. Ingbo, ngora wa yaldul wa se, se gi dal madeel al forty million al loan. Bodogmier ngir ra twenty twenty one, ma twenty twenty two. Alsumo magadu di ngul, ngul ol ya ra twenty twenty one. Ya twenty twenty two. Et tial government ta di kiul. Ruweptra, al seela, ah hole, il deha gal sabed al me tov dar ngi. Akumdas we ngire dal mo face tial reality rikid. E recognize, el wa se, ki da ngara al seela unprecedented time, ra al seela bluulat. Ndidiha ta la bo waisea, ai ge isar bluulat. Ndeha gal sabed al goramangwi dal dasyo dal wa se di do la alon. Eda kontinyul dispendra, a pajet dal di wa il al time. Mong, tiangamra lobra dal, dal decision. Mri ngel rikid, dal temela senkyo, eda du lo wa se, ere bod, katra pajet tra bluul belaw. Ndii, aktir gal madangil wa se gudamlo, omes tial pajet. Ma i ge gi dal level ra. Audo dal mora, asalar reason wages. Sel miss department communication ten da seventy three, Mr. President. Tigeela July twenty two, ngi adur quarter report ra. Bluul belaw, sel obor sel schedule i. Ing malwa isakmula se, a total salaries and wages ra government ta bluul belaw. Ah deha gal bol yang lakra, owal million. This is financial report, sabed al gulya decision, el beis tial. Tial, tial udo dal tov dal mora, audo di ra adra belaw. Ah deha bol tedob, tial pajet ra government. Mr. President, magi mal wa se, we have room to cut a little bit. To gesa usagared, to gesa arited. Eda gatmaklid, e gudamora amri ngal yolt, ma amri ngal daav. Ma the, gatmaklid rogui, ma aradra bluul belaw, ma i ge isar rikid, el ngara. Ah, al se la ringal daav, el al nextel two years, ah deha do dangil wa se, momarang. Mong. Ai mal, lol ngi tra understanding. Ma, a ngir ra bekel adra belaw, wa se, we're facing a hard time. Egire dal mo obengel. E gudangartal imol omral. Ling, ndiha gal swad al wa se, kontinyul tial, dal ngar ngi. Ya next year, edi da kiul mo, pai mole offra ra adebo la audo deh. Ma, girer se ba bebi ra i gal udo. Mo sabed al kontinyul, pai employer ra ra adra, twenty twenty one, ma twenty twenty two, ma twenty twenty three. Bai makintado oi taiga ludo dar, deha gal. Asabel mengil, asabel mo uriul expenditure, sabed al dile expenditure. Ya pai uriule pai bodale offra ra. Pai segi da girer dal plan ngi. Sula ngi, Mr. President, teal.
Senator Chin.
Mr. President, komalmasaula teale. Sometimes you have to make a hard decision, lo leader. Yanga kamembel ra wa isenmin, kamitira, Mr. President. Emle sayra kamitiriport. Emlemadangil wa se, ndiha ga imol adamole off. Mes dal ngar tia, do saadur ngi wa se, ngaria mulole off. Come on, please. Don't do that. You're putting words in my mouth, in my mind, el deha, deha klamarang. Ndiklemadangil wa se, demesei bra Ministry of Health. Important thing is, Dr. Quartey. Keme se bra Minister of Education, we need education. Minister of Justice, ma social security. Ai ge ya importante floli der, malu gud, gud di, milas ra five percent iri ngi. Aklo lospe ra bi las e, Mr. President. Gidangaraling dal, se lorgoniya Senator Inabo. Ya omto ra yolt, se se yolt me. Na mogire dal slow down, tial bilshenet. Le lag do ken da duud, edha gudungwa alduk. Mr. President, nga ka mal, nakmal otngia, atangakal Senator Rudim. Chairman ra wa isenmin serikid. Ra malungireren, ma naobla takl. Makmal unit rigid rogui. Member tulak, tegid lorgoniya Senator Rudim. Bor sabed al alduk la floli der. Komalmasaula.
Senator Senior.
Komalmasaula, Mr. President, ra teal. Mr. President, nga ka, ta xal, na kona touch on the numbers. Ak pai mumsada policy. Le gi da, blol, madu ul wa se gi da, sel da dong okr tia ngi gi da policymakers. Makmal, orangasulela Senator Rudim, chairman ra wa isenmin, ra malungin report. Ngora, ah, endrator meri gi de, ingyak tov da wa i ga gi dal report, el meral ru laal mo wa se. Wow, I'm proud to be a senator. Tiangat twenty two pages report. We talk again about institutional memory, Mr. Presidente. Ya aldo madamo rela institutional memory, ngil deha report al wa i ga gi. Makmal mo otngia rela Senator Rudim, lai gel roguil meeting rikid. Emle dokumented, ngaria regora deri. Emogutmakla report al mal extensive, ema gas, ai gel, el waya tial process, el du li gi ngi. Akmal mo otngia Senator Rudim, le ngol tulak se gi dal tugura process. Ado ya ga process emiru lauriol. Magomo, lo wa se, akmal disappointe dal executive branch. Sel dosa da processing, se gi dal FA, se gi dal CBA continuing. Pajet authority me, mal dimlaal, korotirakli se gi dal teletele la process ra biol. And, mong. Akmo. Yanga kamisayna report, emal supporta rela la kamiti. Mal amatringi ra tegi dal mal comprehensive report that was done. Sel swakal mo highlighter ngi, patoga swakal, madu du ul girer ndi. Sel mal swakal mo highlighter ngi, angara page eight. Ah, sel. Angara bal ngela, sel paragraph wa se. Tial teletal, el propose ra simple continuing budget authority. El ngi amal mol, merai gi spending level rikid ra FY twenty twenty. Minus ai gel one time, el do dangi akmung coronavirus, madu, deha gal include ai ge gi. Ndii se gi dal, el, ruli se gi dal simple continuing budget authority. Al maintain, tial FY twenty twenty. Knowing, damadangi akmula wa se, more reduce, a revenue gi. Revenue tial bluul belaw, blaw reduced. Ya gorad deha gal duknu wa se. Ngara gorap, ngara bod, kata tial pajet, talub, ngara gorap additional. El, financing, el provider. Se gi dal teletal, ngilul msaanga. Ah, nextel government, ai gel momri ngel decisions, le. Ngwaya bol, el, ngmaya i gal udo dal el ang, eda ga, amomade, el mora i gal merel mil government. Mr. President, ma i ga gi da, tul, luulakmal omarang tial, el blad gatmakli, eh. Ya omarang al wa se, tegi di ya. Amaral, teletal, it's the right thing to do. Akhoten, Mr. President, sel mlamadung easy way out. Malbeota de du lo wa se. Minister Finance, amlamik, puri gi da, kutia sabed akmakli, ngaria audo. Let's go ahead and pass it. Mlakmuri gi da, ngaram ngi deha gudengir ngi. Yangan Minister Finance, angai gi diya, madangi ipengel belaw, angai akotal eli moska, kaya girer dal ultu iri ngi. And I think yang, ulugomadakmula waisea, adra bluul tirak omarang gi da. Malas, oh, deha gal sumo, audo amlakmal wa se, waisei. Se gi da girer dal tirakri, meral, amral sabed al justifying. Ya Minister Finance, akmal mlebl gatakla lobengel dal, lowais ai gi gi di, ludo dal wa se, more. More your revenue, ai gi gi dal blal mention, lo, loaisa Senator Inabo. Ai gel revenues, eh, i gal meral mil, telarak. Madamadangi akwa se, momka sa audo, okay? Mend sabed al, ignore se gi, deha gudosadal wa se, meral modi ga audo, wa se. Mlakmo Minister Finance, presidential public, amla otu, odurkia continuing budget authority. Eda gengir ngi, maloray. Ya ra adu rogui, dilungil arandir le, it's election year. Girer dal make sure, tokora diungil arandir arak. But sel question al omoye ngi, awa se. Se li mi tamdamakla se. Ngaha ko kultuira ya, tial lu, madur, adra laa segi, tial geru guger ngi. Se li mi tamdamakla se, redition al omi iker ngi. Mga ka, malomral, sel blad gatmakli, el, propose a budget cuts. Mong, sabel li mi tamdakla se, knowing akmula wa se. Deha gal se dal mal mol, al ngar tia ngi dal continuing budget authority. Eda, kultuira alon, el sabel tial seela. El deha kawara wal ngod, al, tial revenue, lai gal meral merakadu mes. Sel number one, el industry gi dal tourism. Amla, namodiha gar turistel me. Mri ngala, these are hard times. Eh gi da, sel sumo madangar amdal, amakle dal dukmu. This is the reality, aradra bluwa, motal gibil sabiral. El mo, mongrem, ematmoq al girer tial, i gal le, lerunge de raal me, meral modiha ga. Audo dar belaw, ming. Gatmakli el ang, tolo mol, el sabed al. Al seel baakla, i gal meral mil telarak. Akmudal mo otngian ka gi dal eh, chairman ra kamiti. Le, malmungil tial reporter ngi, madasa i ge gi di, el ngi at challenges of the face. Le la al, dal ngar tia. Ngire dal. El makers se gi dal policy decision. And I'm, lobengela Senator Quartey wa se. It's a good day to be a senator, and I'm really happy with my signature ngar tial. Standing gamitiriport number ten da two eighty five. Eh, olita, terigel timlakal saingal wa se, mem, rican se der. Rican se der. Em sainga ra report. Edo lo mol, supporte, makaluriol, msaakra bluul belaw. Sula, Mr. President.
Marian Oda, Senator Skubom.
Sula ngi, President, mar bekel Senator. Ah, eli, se do meeting, omadangilik. Agulgera questioni. Luwa se tia. Ngatangil time. Il gi da mo ngutyal, imam madesel, kumengsel dal ngar pajet. Em blol ngar obisa Presidente, me il ming, mlam merur rogir. Ndii tial el al, teletal, mlorige, ma ulakti lu wa se. Mla, tanangwa, abrao, malngi dal ngul, oi tirakal seela senet. Komadangil, sera, ada askra pajet, malameendi mle two pages. Magadamangil, el mangil ra FAA. Se gi dal ngara sera august eighteen. Et tingilwa FAA, lemey, lemey direkal di. Te gi dal, dal ngamur ngi, el angal, direkal di, ngilul, me se, tiaki. Ngul. Bagidet tial, mlam amru ngi, mak, egi tet tial ngamur, el al girer wa se. I hope esal me, tial pajet. Et tingitmakli, me, magardia, mes ri ngi, eh gata gudamaklar ngi. Ndeha gal blal ngutyal. Brao, malngi dal ngul, me oi tirakal tial blal, ra senet. Ti gi dal tial, ngaku bawawas, el al seal swase gi dal gudamaklar. Se gi da, ima, ngungilabol, blagatak, el meral bekel. Le gi da, tia, tia first time, ngara gudamesa pajet, wa se, nga ka malakabeno. Em, eme, tiakatangil time, il gi sangal dil ngar. FAA ngul, me mid, midakli ra dal onglio wa se, merur tia. Ma ulme el al time, gudam amru lakatel. Eh, egi da, magariol, gudangar sel votel. Problem bluul belaw, le tial, rak tamlamay. Mergadidel. Obi, obisi, el amgadunamo, deha gudangil wa se, gudamaklar. Anyway, ti, merangasulela bekel adra, egi da ndi. Sel. Il gumes ra tial. Pajet dal tial gat. Ing, nga ka gongera gat. Ndii. Bebi ra, i gal gumesin, sabel, mo ulak create a problem. Kamay do, sel, sel Ministry ra obi ang. Kamiamadangil, terigel adala obi ang, terigel, terigel, malamr tial rahe. Terigel pajet, tira eight hundred thousand, madangil. This cut is one million. Mogire dal mood, lo mes se, se gi dal direkal. Mogit, motkitad, da kol mol, 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 mol. Direkal, do mes, adoray. Direkal domeseng, adoray meriol gi dale, tirgal, adra egal erul. Ol, olbiila, senate mahausa. Mokatra ngara almost ten million itse, ngara three hundred million, am three hundred thousand, angara, it's too much. Meng. Koradi may gaige dale may, lo artiam kadu domesel, ngaka diakal, kadu madenge. Nda ka, adal, mo diakalurores, senator Chin. Di waykaige dale katang. Kadu magarang, kela lulil, dilu tel, domeset ti al kat, edetil ki bil, adjust, al sugum kadu kat. Oh, ilme ngara ten or something. Di, to fifteen percent, it's too much for me. Ilgumes ra state, block granting mo, para one point two million dollars, bodo katertil. Nakamle, a kabenor, malmringla omkabenor, very hard work. Mong direkli gira, domesel sit. Madenge, maringa, maringla rokultakoi, mong kadireklo mesling. Mongil aige dale, ti al katra, egal state. Direkal. Osisiul time, ming. Mswakal, tel ki bil, mga dadu ulwasi, okmon di gi, okmon di gi. De capital blay il direk. De capital blay involbert yang. Mavi vinsen, sebe edel mutal, multatsa. Di sel ilgumes ringi. El al time apresure, el amla, mlahmawa. Mdaso, tamlasat, l, l, lakregi dale wasi, gi dada magarare, il artian, tirgal, senate tamagara. Mgidam malungil, aige da, omdasra, future belur belav, kodom dasra. Twenty twenty-two FY twenty twenty-three. Mkadu malungila, omdasra senate, ngaga, agri la, bengirula. Wayse gi dale teletaal, wasi, ngi dera sebra, ablur belav. Di. Sel ilgumes ringi, ilgumes ra, adersa, ti al goin. Agmwalgal, like I said, okmon di gi, that's fine for me. Ngakamal, atigurul yatako edo bom. Edalu tel. Kadu magarang, malu, tamrangkle. Ti swakal di, yo, om, oh, ren, oh, koradi. Uaisa aige dale, cancer ngakara girila aige dale, ti dale, girami, amistri ra. Apii I I C ma. Aige, ma, egal tul. A senate mahausa, ma state. Direkal, sel ilgumes ti al mermera, alasta. Eh, kadu kata ngara, three hundred thousand, mara scholarship fund. Meng ngaram kadu ere, education, meng. Madegla five, five, seven, seven five percent. Aige da katra scholarship, a fifteen percent. Ya ngalge da mommagarang, ngara awtsai. Aige di cancer ngakam, atikmuling, akkor ilgumes tiangandi. Aigel, momadong ra ti al hulawa, aige dha, bodo follow. Di, ulubongling, di swakal uaisel wasi. Ngara ulakmle. Asana reporter Eli, Senator Chin. Okmon dimlak dasa, ti reporter mo, obetok? Indakal se edel, mangadu urtiak, ma adu, adu, adu ur, giril teagi dale, teagi da wey. Kadu sana reporter may, kadu madu uringi, mo, sebe edel, ilgumes wasi kadu magararingi, opposition rigida moringi. Aige da, ilgumes egingi, li ti, dirgamora, second reading, dirgamora, house, kadu ilgumes ringi wasing, magarang. Ekmadengila house, il dakal sebe el, already tanaw, udingwal may, mal, malko, plbulngu, kumangara, maskaw, kumangakbulngu, klo la dal, saudut ti al wasi. Meng, goradakal salungila, adreng sawa gaige dale mergi. Andi. Aklo explanatory wasi, alamlagim, sana se reportel majority, and dakal sebi ulmagarang. Adang mle sebi ulmagarang, al sugum daging sana report, dakal se el ngaringi ti al meetingrel antar. Bakdim mle explanatory, chukwem, chukwem, madingel wasi, au olmagim mle sana ti al majority. Mong mos ti al reportel, to, to, bodo discuss ringi, gungera domeseringi wasi kadu magaralbekla. Lakmo, bakao, lava korra, deligi ngamol molme, gamama direkal degim sakukmal, deligi, ki direkal, maklo la dal, namaru na. Tagoyi, magarang, atikmul wasi, gomnal masaulen, saula chairman rigida narulitiang. Kadu korra, mo, bang, korra, sendi, koradi, omse wasi, aige de chairman, omkoradi, cancer ngakandhi, that's okay for everybody. Solam.
Senator Kyotha.
President, Maluitil Itasil, sel Mergau, uh, tangakal senatorudim, vice presidentergi, ma, tangakal senator Malu, Floridergi. Marbik, Senator. Solartalte, legi, Mr. President, akmo, diakal malmodongsiya, tangakal chairman rigida, omilur eler. President, okmo, otia. Au dosuwe, gamtegi doro, maringa saula ngakamora chairman, sel, ngari sel. Page fourteen twenty-two, sel second paragraph, ngare aigel teplol option, sel. Lil ang mak, aktilu la ulel, il mutul murel al time, wasi, segi dera option one, awa, ulmol, mol, loldu peringi. Lo bengela aigel minor amendments, mora, specify, sel, aigel supplemental, mora social security. Bolash, Mr. President, regi mle, adra ngaramong. Uh. Tangakal minister, sa dan, selo, lo duur gi, ding, meti al FAA al may. Dimlak lolsis, bratogora pensioner ringi, ma, wapi usiringi, ngukmani a separate, edo duul, maral girila aige. Direkli gel. Uh, time, la dadu, mlambo blakataklowase, bol mutra, abalmenta Taiwan. Republic of China, Taiwan, amla, suspend aigel six alone argi, ma, for the next two years. Et ti al loan, eh, dibilo, itugunia, uh. Minister. Adodan ngali wasing, ngaria five year grace period, eh, yes, kadu mo hara uringi, auru ra five years. Kadu masa da alone, Mr. President, blal, ngaka omesing investment. Aradra belav, maleblihuder tir, ta rel basut. Direk, Mr. President, aigel, omesa reporter, tangakal chairman rigida, wasi, minsel, sel page eight, moranai. Ngari aige dale requirements ra, gi dale monatmoqla, almoveela, segi dale rogil. Law. Ling. Tostemon gi dale maral law. A P P F, rigida diga, diga aklagan godang, maral may. Agal hotel, sabla cloak, sel diga room tax. Agal NCO sel gi dale, mle urilar, agal betol. Uh, bisire, bisire sesel, mara donation, sebora, aya, agal tim direkli diga. Meng. Agu, agu mesiringi wasing. Waylet aige dale. Karior, ngalbul dangal sel, a direkli ti al, meski dale, kadu omesa aigel, lurbatakra. Ra, abalmentergi, dingar aleth, aige dera dudmoq. Sel adu ur, bengela. Uh, minister, ndirekal silbedid, segi dale corporate registry, bel, menchoni, a, tangakal senatora earlier. Eh, direkli silbedid ra tax reform, so we move from CRT to VIT. Momlara, tax ruwé, dakadu larinuri. Ma aige bebir ra, uh. Atgoil, ilgi dale motmoqla, espalasi may gelsa, a gi dale, Mr. President, abay uspe aige dale time, egutmoqla. Ling. Alakdo, alamlagabide sis, bertia gi dale time, eh, lela, aige gi dale ti al, sebe edel, ngoswira. Abalmentergi dale, mo, wina teelil, wina isel, romelinga ludow. Ling. Agal, aige dale numbers, ngare gal, ngare gal pieces, dilo, tangakal siato inabu, aige gi dale, lo altu wasi. Ndiga audo, ngaria, ngire dale uspe infusiona, beesel, ludow dale me, emakli ti al. Bilas lolgoria, tangakal siato Chin. Osisiul time, Mr. President, eh, eh, aige dale luriol, abay gi dale, lo daudu swede, otio wasi, ngaria political will gi dale gutmoqla aige. Ming dakabodol mosos, ngidil, yo sang, mora, aradal tir, amla, ma uben government, tir, amla, irmaraga aige dale. Budgeter tir girawreli, tokuni a, aige duleyora, raste. Ngaga almut, Mr. President, mori trade, rapositional, wasi, uspe akka, malmol, ngar segi dale, option one, ngara page fourteen twenty-two, klik makla committee. With aige dale, minor amendments, most specify, ra, ngesel mora, social security benefit, moro, roir, mo trage. Continuing budget items. Eh, eh, og, eh, direklo uaisel wasi, even though ngaria loan ra P N C C, Mr. President, and the P N C C has been able to pay the loan on their own. De tourio ringi, tourio lorutra, so bar tir. Medenge ike rogui, expenses tir, eh, ba, bachelors, sera, services tir, enough, lorotia ombali, hara, employees, eh, hara, betsir. Bakti eklo, omdasu wasi, galil direkli lungi ti dale time, wa government, ngara imara P U C, eh, P U C, medilingi lo, meru laurere. El ogutmoqla, electrical rates tir, ma sumen tagai, ebol tagai, ngidi bol subile, omdow darad, eh, hara, awa, 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 belsirap P U C, waya loan, lolal, me motmoqla urere. Malakabel sis, bratom sengela abalment. Aige dale tokoi, Mr. President, aige dale gutmoqla, emorinya, sel political willer gi dale wasi, bom, embul, egal urere. Em, gutmoqla olingil, aige, rogul trentingil giril, Marshall Aral. Emorgo gi dale dangai madar ti, bodo, dibod awa, omsi unala, belu, mara, begal, sama, torobos, agency government, mlo ruril, ngar aige. Bol muta sel gaigaga, para osa, meri, ebol, ndirekal, malungil oldaso. Al sebi iril, modi tir, mora egal urere, ele, ele charge, aige services tir, according to their business plan, ebol wayse. Ngaga, Mr. President, a direkli mal begik, raterel basri araa. Bakbalo, mo, odrshia, klo, omul, mora, chairman rigida, tangakal siato rudim, vice presidenta ti al blay. Ma, aragaliar senator sorogui, ma urio milgatmoqle, eh, mo, olingi, wasia, ti, imol, urure, udare sen, senator, president Paulis. Agukpoko, awanari, ngaga ma, chairman agamitirka, musulartal ti al.
Solam. Senator Nakamburu.
Saurat, al, Mr. President, eh, aktimo, o, o, ti, sel nyau ulum, lo deksana, ra committee report. Mr. President, eh, kadu rogul, madengel kuasakadu ngara, alsel, lamringil time, rela, yidetel, masawderingi. Uh. Sel dungur, aige redaktion ra budget, ma, anything el dorul kat, akumarang, Mr. President, kuasigal ngara, alsel, aige redactions. Adi ngaria impact ringi, mora, ader belav rogui. Andi, SS Senator, akmal, nyomral kuaseng, nde gumes ringi, ngara, aige figure, summa, o, ulngar madan. Ma de gumes ringi, ngara percentage. Legumral kuasese, sel. Eldungura, tokora, a budget raguka government, ma national level. Ande gal girad, lo mes, ande gal girad, kat a budget, el base ra percentage, oring figure. Ling rang, aiga surra, ader belav rogui. Mongoki usai, Mr. President, tadimla imol, lu ulungmo. Tel ki bil, maringa ngaga, sana ti al, committee report, et liste, blodadengel kuasese, sel fifteen percent cut. Oring aige redaction, sel rang impact ringi, mora, aige, bureau, summa, agency, summa, a state level. Especially state level, tir altakara, mal, tarbasil, ader belav, aige sixteen state, Mr. President. Mswakal momadengel kuaseng, sel, medel ngara, fifty-nine thousand, five hundred fifty redaction, mlo ra, to obe. Orsel redaction, mlo rang ayangal, sixty-five, seven hundred. Ngarang impact ringi, mora government, rang ayangal, on monthly basis, or aige bekal state, resurbi, sel provider. Waklungel sing, wangara impact ringi. Segi dale, Mr. President, a gi dale mo awering, S Senator, mle swakal momadengel kuaseng, aige redaction, sel mora ministry, summa bureau, ngara, more impact, el mora aige. Before akme gara decision. M A B. Ngoki usai, engse edel, mo understand, eti arogil, el kat, dale, me garingi, kuasen, mo, ngara. Ngoki wa tul consultation, eh, Mr. President, il, bengela minister, minister of finance, actually, ekmlotel ki bil, ngaria optimism, ngaga gal girila, ti al gudkorra budget. Ado reduce by fifteen percent or five, still kadu molone, Mr. President. Malak, magadadi momeling. Al sugumen, se edel maintainer, say, maladur belava, at least, eh, enjoy, sel. At least, atamadengel kuaseng, stable arogui, and that's fine, aguk ngak, S Senator. Legumral kuaset ti al, so-called, taung ringelda, adatur alsel. Altang maringil, andi gumral kuaseng, ngar aleth. El monatmoqra ringi. Ngoki usai, Mr. President, andireklo, logi usai, fifteen, ma five, agumral kuasikadu, rogui. Logi deta ti al, masawdut ti al budget cut, ngaga umral kuaset ti al, impact, el mora services, especially national, ma state level. Ki dale, Mr. President, akmedel twenty-nine, aige tul blay, musugra akmedel ogi, mletela, la onla. Ya gumral kuasen, mlarangia, awdasu, molla, il direkli, gudkorra, mlsawderingi, reduce a salary argi. Adat pat by fifty percent, we save seven hundred twenty-five thousand. Mavi vingla se edel ngu, ngul omira aiga, etil ki bil, holda aige kat, Mr. President. Segi, ya loral, malamia, kelmore executive level. Kadu am, kadu am, adu ur, ngara one million madeni. Segi dale, Mr. President, amle reservation, ngaga ulandimlaxana tiang. Eh, direkli, S Senator, agumral kuasen, any cuts, even two percent or point five. Ngire dale understand, sel. Klungela, impact ringi, especially state level. Ngaria bebir a state, Mr. President, emgegray, ndirekli diimeltela, Mr. President, madboda minus, eh, abu, ile, tomolvolu. Mong segi dale, Mr. President, aguk reservation, ngaga, emal, mongulra, decision, ra committee, ma majority tir, senate. El giril say, maqmodesilo mongul, ngaga, edimlaxana, ra committee report, eh, direklo, logi wa, security reading, alo sisiu. Eh, aktive, eh, Mr. President, akmo, security no. Saurat, al.
Senator Ludim, eh, halibol, mregat chairman, edalu trasegan round, malomu, labiya, Senator Klay, Senator Chairman.
Mr. President. Walmsawli, Mr. President. Mr. President, a, a, gabolo ren, saadra blum, swadal man, momgego agi, demgatakl, el tokoi, Mr. President, ti al fifteen percent cut. Adakal dil one time, el kat, dil omuul, il minus fifteen percent. Nda ka mosto, sel, ti al olbil, moshois, brat twenty twenty-one, mosel nextel olbil, mor introduce a supplemental budget, al ngaria source of funding. Mesel do, du, 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 waysel, gal omaktaktra, aden dakal salungil, eh, olbil, aglulawa, dakal, lo tra iman, eti al oldaso molla. Aige, tokora wa, a proposal la, adigobarrosa. Merasel, bodomeset ti al budget, eh, bodomtaba aige gi, eh, kadu motu itis, tokora wasi, kadu momtaba, knedra ya. Mesel do, ngelakadu, buti gani, kadu mora, ar, ar ya, le moge ngay, ya ra adal, amgalidra, a tritur, agi dama, trukidat, telurior. Ma. Wa, 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 ma asalonge, Mr. President, ra, akundas, emmal, blakataklurior, ngar madad. wa, 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 ma asalonke, Mr. President, ra, akumdasu, mjal loka takluur ngar madad mo oul. Agal muldo ngul asin, tangan ngar adiagal odongi agal togo ma agal lo ul, e Mr. President, seya ul magdorugid tiel ruor, e mni ra F A A. A funds availability analysis, lol tirakrala, agidl mo olt agel rogu. Agamitirgaw, Mr. President, was deprived of that opportunity, el mes, magidl lo gamo mde ngi. Abodod tirakral ulawurele tiar blai, agi agidl milagidl magdokl, mmeragaw, mraulal, dadapt ring for spreading, assign ringi mmeragamitirgaw, e kado ma tetel el aurior. Klow tutelat tetel auror tiar blai, Mr. President, abodoko, adu goradi, ngaragauror, ma uba gadi orre. E gadi toira hirsel el ddu, yabulu amtomalawai el altan. Ulgo mgodongil agi agid, agi agidl el ddu, ma sebo kregma, a togora rose, adiagal part el ddu el altan, ndiak alrelevant el altan. Sin sin diagal odongi, e kado ma fifteen percent, omol godiringi, if force our ministers, ma agal girilu tirakra budget con ma performance budgeting. E mulangalir, msel leme kado la ba rogu information, ndiak adanat tiang edohu or el altan. Awol mongmara report, asin, leme oudol mey, dimla kanalal do ngu. Mongaram, kado ngiril, mo merulaurele, emaknitela. Mongaram, kasenator, do ngok, le ma amla, okodong, ma sebo mga bulung. Akulengi, twansumong morsebol mo olt, lo mora kuasint adi lo uaisen, ma sumong mor ngar bos, ma ngaragibolo dingil adu bela rogu, mba mduur senkiyo. Ndiak swede, Mr. President, rour uaiset, ya, aklanar adal ultoira gi. To buurar adal diagal odongi, omral gi. Le akmo begik, sel do ruor, merula tegalardastal ad, yabulu a bulan. Ngaria tooksi lubi, Mr. President, ra ongerul kan ganatutau sen five, ra adu trela min senti. Il togora bela asin, musuk malas. Akpromis ngi, Mr. President, wa bulogu toka mregel, wa asin, it's a double edged sword. Melobo onmon, e melobo onme. Alsum, katra fifteen percent, e ngaria tamalira vitay, ngaria sebo akli. Plus ya minus, kamasuk, e malas, mal uba gamlas, e masuk, il togora belaw. Msel bebilat tam, Mr. President, kado motu spea togora mregel, ma la, el mengui dattoi, e obes a togora belaw, ngia sebo akli. Alsum, ngaria togora ga riol, mo amtaarbasulat tooi, e doore ergi. Ngaria tararubak, kuksilibata tooi, Mr. President, ra adu daspadala, asin, ngaria togora daspadala, asin, se se maawasa. De sebo losa alongo sae olten, etuk ma mengawas, Mr. President, ndiak si, mtena garagel. Et tiya, Mr. President, akuludaset tiang, adiagal togora balatiksar dastal ad, togoro ul. Ya tanaqtsi ato, Kyota, mmenjone agidl togora rose rala. De, Mr. President, kada bela asulera reporting, W I O A. E mraulal, mkombon nomsal drongi, maka, ngakama, mri ngasulera, U S Embassy, ma bulu ra mregel, Mr. President, maka mkomne mmenjone senke. Gera bela asulera mregel, agel ngasul lamme. Ra da, ngo wa W I O A. A report, mraulal, mngidl rogu mde ngi, bela rogu mga ngasen, tiang alamo mgin ra December. La agi, kado plitjen dalgon diagal odongi, asit tiang alamo mgin ra December, epasra. E momtora, oitera, senke deteg, osteritimejus, olibologesa, olgasanga. Alisegidl, tra faktor, mde ngel senator, senatel na admito, senke toga diagal odongi. Mongaram, ndiagal odongi, digoko ngi. Akdisoakal, mgodaklisi, Mr. President, ta direklo, olengi trorder, ra tretel auror. Agan ngar madad, mgodaklisi, tiang, diagabo do ururu, akmo galakl, mongarara siyasingel. Akuk ngak, akmo defender, sel adra bulu, lultoira agal togora loi, ma togora ruol el molla. Et tedig mo ra house, mutuk moa imori, mal swir. Ndigi kumdasu, Mr. President, ulengi trgaw lultoira leadership, Mr. President, agal rogu tooi, sel sumo mastat, mo mbor ngia awanai. Ngirel adu governor, ma speakers, ma adu tiel bulu lo gamo mdekmo, seegidl kado magarang, mla kado motal akra tooi. Ling swela adu lozulu, el mora bulu, e obidat tooi, mgodakm nitela adu tirau nyang. Seegidl, ak begik, Mr. President, pali diu, Mr. Trump, mo va agal news, fake media, fake news. Ma tiang amla, mo raktra, lo adu rogu, ra adu menguidat tooi. Ma kulengi traga, seegidl, senator, sputes baak laurele, mle bolodikm ngaragadam sa. Bolodongi, adu sen diagal didoral, diu mulakrara. Sula, Mr. President.
Senator Clay.
Oi, sauli President. President, ak timo, mulu asin, inabom lo ender sel prediction, ngira twenty twenty-one. Seegid, ya, sel mal barom ra expected revenue bo dolari. Di sel do lomol, ra, ngia stadil blal, dosaodongil, lo benta, adu, adu A D V, mtrigem namiga stadil, asin. Ngaria akmaklol possibility, mri ngia speedy recovery. Mong, malubing, alseguma, ovida persistent, e kado mor seegidl, el pace ra ovida. Di sel domesha F Y twenty twenty-two, enmas ra, mo forty-nine million one hundred taral revenue, revenue. From forty million to forty-nine. Di sel domesha, sel expected F Y twenty twenty-three, enmas, mo sixty-one million. Ya omogongar seegidl, swishu pace, mo eighty million twenty twenty-four, e mo ngara ninety-five million twenty twenty-five, e over a hundred million twenty twenty-six. Seegid, ya, adu mes ngi, el ngia wa algora, adandangal girela financing, ma revenue, blu beral, mre mitmo. Atar al dili, minister, e, nomsadlo, asin, goramal, sel leme, kada dioreng, saigel, il togora lo ruol ma, wisaltraurele. Ngaka, omra agi, President, a minister, asinsa twenty-four-tine, mna turn Republic of Palau, to the point of, sebeela bekel bulu, blu adu, respect ringi. In term of financing, ma in term of development, ma in term of leadership, il ki da ngaria lulbengela, President, lo lulme. Atar al blol dili, minister, asia, tiel continuing resolution, el bom bodolar ngi. Angel mo va gi ngal, anekstir, President, asel mo katakos during the process. Seya, abol omes ngi, el diu uaisel, lurur ngi, Tamir Mosao, since twenty-four-tine, mre lam, oldum laringi, reserve fund, twenty-three million. Halak terimododu, Mr. Mason. Ya, sel domesha, President, seegid, ya, a trend, el dangari delang. E mal ngiredl motabat, gi ngitrigal friends agid, ra ya, regional dangaratila, Australia, Taiwan, Xiavala, mregel. Seral me, Secretary of State, el mark, Esper. A Secretary of Defense coming. Agel, ti ngitrigal agidl, ngaraba la de President, which is, and sel, masenka, ongerul adu, President Trump. We have to mark their words, agel words are means, a support, mre blu belaw. Msel do ngidl, asin, mo confirm that compact two will be settled by the end of the year. He means business. Touro ra compact, el giril momre, ra by the end of the year. Mo maintain a shared value of norm and peace and prosperity, lo bengela blu belaw, il diagal lo bengela blu sina. He will give a sense of security and stability with Republic of Palau. Agi, koto, mo klot togo, President, agi ngaria, a value edel, ngara alsel. Ndiak adil dung, el orail, el oita togoring, ndiak albol support agidl, olaba letters. Akumdasu, Senator China, mal mde ngi, sel dung regel, masi, sel dalea tooi, seegidl, following. To mo support agidl, a line of defense is a partner. To mo support agidl, coronavirus, as they always been doing. Protect Republic of Palau from China. And maintaining a support and growth of finance relationship. Agi agidl, President, agiredl, omogomul, mesal ya longododu, agi agidl, amle bicycle, ti ngel, mre adu belaw. Ma agi, sel, daanvort, el mo, oudow, en ngaralela, President, ra belaw, genexel, President, olmo ruol giril say, el giril adu belaw. Melal dangar, policy level, etiad sal mal mosadha figures, ngaralela, President, agel monexel, President, el mo, motmokra blu belaw, diagal bol, buliha blu belaw. Diu uaya, since twenty-four-tine, the takeover, mre lam. Kade dimla, armulap togor, bepedangela infrastructures, increase a minimum wage, o nasau du dira adu government, o nasai insurance. Smiga low interest loan, mre, aradra sesma, adu aqua kalchur, ma merula blirir. Agang, agang, aurelela, adu ngar executive, el mo, tuobl, el mo, siga agidl, ngesel, mre, adu blu belaw. E diregal, et the same time, el mo siga, adalela, funding, el mora, abatchet agidl, agikara. Msel dangar, policy level, President, kade dimla start, ra el arak, e ngmo diak, a shobaira tourist. Mte, te, milgarang, mlo diagal louro. Ndiak, audow, domdogu etir, mesel, omkata budget, that's what happen, it will affect in that direction. It's a reality. Ma, togora adu finance, ngar tiang, agiril, mo mde ngi, agan. Ngaka, mal diagulib, agang, 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 aulela, agidl, el katingra, a figures, et the same time, a, F A L, blal, diskidl. Enough of finance twenty twenty-one, is more than enough to take care of us. Akumdasu, ngage, President, ta blol, ngakab, blol, mal, lo, 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 bengela, maturitir tiar blaring. I always see the light that they, they try to provide us. Ndidi, tiagidl, tiagidl budget, ta mal, koming, ndiakal sebeel. Kumla, pla, mora agal kor babal, sebeel, malas, mal, lo sikrasi, akmagarang, e mobangamuyu, katetiel budget, nding, ndiakal sebeel. Diu uagel blal du, Senator Kyota, aga mo investment agidl, ra adu belaw, el almo, sula, President.
Senator Ngirebangla.
Saurat, teale, Mr. President, wa dimla kaltsal, sokal mora round two, ndi, ngora, ngaria bebirat togora, namtarakra, luswe, lak dung, mtaarbasul. Ngaka, optimist. Soal omesra, ayangad, mri lasil, se, meelut. De, at the same time, I'm a realist. Ya, reality, a reality. Angar alsel tiel gami tiriport. Ki da, agiredl base, agel decision, sel do made tiel ulaw, on hard numbers, el do ngi. Agel do ngi, ngloka, alsel tiang. Of course, in sebeel, lomba rose, e waseng, amongil ayangadra klugu. Di sel balongil ayangadra klugu, kensadu, ulas supplemental, el asbeel. You can do that next month. Alsuguma, Secretary of Defense Esper say, here's one billion dollars, na saina, checka Trump. We're good, but we don't know that. Ti ga direklo politician, who knows, Trump may lose in November, I mean, how do we know? De, we can say, a corona momregra December, and by the end of next year, ngalmut, one hundred twenty thousand a tourist. We can say, a marine sanctuary close, and by the end of next year, kado na sisva ten million, or malatuna. We don't know that, e dirika, kabo tooi. Agel do ngi, angar alseki tiar report. Agan, ngar alsel tiar report, tamil ngara Ministry of Finance, agaya do ngi. Ma ki da, agiredl mega decision, el base ra fact, agel fact, el do ngi. So, ndimla sokal, mga tekklisi, Mr. President, odamora agil sebeed, not necessarily agil sawath. Odamora agil sebeed, la agaya sebeed, ngar alsel a report, sularat, teale, Mr. President.
Sula, Senator. Halik, tu se se, Senator skabong, e mlaqmu oladam, halik, ik tu se se. Ngaka, mal lobangamuyu, mri ngasulera chairman, ra uaisen minsel, de, kardi omesra klungela report, e mde ngel asin, wangra klungela auror, milgatmokla. Akti, ya gumral, asin, ki da, Senator sel ngartial, matte del Senator, sel ngartia, diagal ngiredl ngartiang, e blame anybody. Diagal ngiredl blame, ra ngidil ad, le ngra, langar aleth. Akpa ya gumral, asin, ngra solution, el solve bertial problem. A solution, el gi drel, el atral defender ngi, agatabatchet ra state, kabatabatchet ra national government, e ngartiang, emsaadul, asin, ungiltooi. Ngaka, guko mes ngil, asin, ndiagal ungiltoga, agatabatchet. Ra ngidil, el, 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 branca qabelment, e diagal ngiredl kat, abatchet ra state qabelment. Ya, ya, adu ngartial, mngddu du, e ngwa, adu proud, asin, kado solve ra problem, adu katabatchet. Ngaka, guko du, ul swir, asin, adu katabatchet ra state, ma national government, e diagal ngiredl ngartiam, mngddu du, el proud, ungiltooi. Tiabait, deed, gi drel ngartial blai. Le gi da, aleth, ngaragut, melanla, SS Senator, osi gaudow, el solve ra problem, ra blu belaw. Ma, tsungadu ngartial proud, el katabatchet, it's our fault. Ba ilad, diagal ngiredl ngartial olbiil, alsum, kado katabatchet ra state, ma national government. Ngiredl, osi gasholution, el solve bertial problem. Edirka, katargidl, metuob, lo uaisel, asin, meel, langal, senasaw du, e kado magarang. Ndiah, adi tan, solution, real, agidl ngartiang, emsaadur ngia, agatabatchet. Which is, ndiakal, ngiredl katabatchet. Akpa, ulngitergidl, asin, between now and January, edo si gasholution, el solve bertial problem. El ngia mal ngar aleth, SS Senator Kyota. Ngar agel, loption, lmedel, el sebeedl, di between now and December, e kader mo, el mo ula, askela uudow, el moswir tiel qabelment. Aradra bluwa, bay morarondil, asin, komkatabatchet, ma tsung, komkatabatchet, rendi gal sebeu ebem, betengel. Edesegidl, triel, adu mor olbiiraklulaw, sel mo moswira qabelment ra blu belaw, adu mora qabelment, sel mo smiga uudow. Le seya ngar alela, leadership ra blu belar, el alosi gaudow. Awol, magdariro, leanla, almsak, a President, ngo si gaudow, mngage drel, lametigaa, angar, ogol milion, ngo kuwal milion. E agi agidl, blal si, el maskidl, ngiredl uuspe. Magdouspes, el solve ra problem, rela, el qabelment, ma aneksel, qabelment. Etirgel moshois bra, alsel tiel, mral meel qabelment, angar aleth, mutul, mosi gash additional funding. El aktireklo, rensergi, kado osiger di loan, el di loan, el di loan, e meral, betogol loan, a bladongai. Di, sumo ngaria solution, el solve ra qabelment ra, adi fesit ringi. E diagal sebeedl, mo la, agel bebir, adomdasu, kado moswir tiel qabelment, edatst, only way to do, amol on audow, el moswir tiel qabelment. E ngaraleth, ngartial government, el smiga uudow, el mo hara, blsel tiel government, tau, mgodangara, olbiiraklulaw. Ling malkliiraw, attelanla, taras, angaraletha, osi gaudow, el solve ra problem. Ma bay ontigl, meri gi drel rogu, alsum, kado katabatchet, emla disaidl, katabatchet, e mekulengi, mukuto, si gasholution, el mosol, bay gel, dagat, el budget, bladagat, asin, magadagat, emgarang. Ngararo lele, kado smiga uudow, el mosol, bay gal gi dammo gat. El uul ma, a qabelment tergi drel, elanga, angarata, reel besul. Ya, alsum, mgodukti, omdasu, agatabatchet, e diagal swadalon, e madaktel mo hara alon, e ndiagal sebeedl, solve problem. Ya, agal blsel, blu bela, mal magasail, blalts. Betoga, asetra, blu belaw, sel beedl, duul, el hara, agal di ngaradart, ngirul dartel milion. Ma, ndiak, SS Senator, ngaria bebir, blul, kmeder gi, sel beedl, do ngi, tahrabl, tse, de, osu gi, mde bor ngi. Ki drel tiel ultoila, agal blul, kmeder gi, mgodim ngi takla, e agadi, gasail uudow. Ta diogor dia, imol bas, el asin, agidonai, tertial, legura school, e kado mla, four give. Ta di si, agel garel, far trakal mey, malubing, imol, garel, ambulance, kado se ngungyang, ndiak, ngil, SS Senator. And they say, "I'm not going to do it." 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 And they say, "I'm not going to do it." And Senator Inavo.
Senator Inavo.
Mr. President, I'm not going to do it. They say, "I'm not going to do it." But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." I'm not going to recognize the problem. But the problem, they say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." And, Mr. President, I'm not going to do it. Because I'm not going to do it. The Secretary of Defense, I'm not going to do it. And I'm not going to do it. They say, "I'm not going to do it." And, Mr. President, they say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." And if you say, "I'm not going to do it." If you say, "I'm not going to do it." The inflation in 2008, the time, is triple the amount. And if you do it, the investment, and the agreement. Mr. President, I'm not going to do it. But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." We need to do the budget. We need to do it. But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." And maybe, if you don't recognize the problem. I hope, Mr. President, you can do it. Because you say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." 2019 or 2015. Because I'm not going to do it. At the end, I'm not going to do it. If you do it, the solution. Because I'm not going to do it. Because I'm not going to do it. Do something. So, Mr. President.
Okay, I'm not going to do it. The chairman, the chairman, the senator, Mario Aymina, you're right.
Mr. President, I'm not going to do it. Mr. President, the report, the committee report. I'm not going to do it. Mr. President, I'm not going to do it. But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." I'm not going to do it. Because I'm not going to do it. Because I'm not going to do it. The director, the leader meeting, we're kicking the can down the road. I'm not going to do it. Because I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. Because I'm not going to do it. Number two, Mr. President, the water project. Because I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. They say, "I'm not going to do it." But if you say, "Mr. President, I'm not going to do it." I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." Because I'm not going to do it. The problem is, I'm not going to do it. But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." Because COVID-19 is not clear. But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." A part of the solution, Mr. President, is arms. Because I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. Because I'm not going to do it. There are challenges. The director, the point of order, I'm not going to do it. The director, I'm not going to do it. But the formal communication. I'm not going to mention the state grants. Mr. President, I'm not going to do it. 16 states, COVID-19 assistance. But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." I'm not going to do it. The director, Mr. President, I'm not going to do it. Because I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. The director, I'm not going to do it. The member, I'm not going to do it. Mr. President, under your leadership, I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." Because the supplemental, $800,000, $50,000 each state. And if you say, "I'm not going to do it." Create the supplemental next. The director, Mr. President, I'm not going to do it. Again, the point of order, Mr. President, I'm not going to do it. Because I'm not going to do it. They say, "I'm not going to do it." So, Mr. President.
If you say, "I'm not going to do it." The budget, I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. Because I'm not going to do it.
Certainties.
Certainties. The director, the director. Lord Leader.
The president, the number eight, the committee report. The number nine, the number nine. The day of the day, the item ten. The item eleven, the calendar. I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it.
The motion, the second, the clerk.
Senate Bill Number 10-182. Bill for not to adjust the deadline for receipt of absentee ballots for the 2020 presidential primary and general elections. To adjust the deadline for certification of the 2020 general election results. The deadline for receipt of absentee ballots for the 2020 primary election and presidential election. The deadline for certification of the November November. The deadline for the president.
If you say, "I'm not going to do it." I'm not going to do it. Because I'm not going to do it. The chairman, JG, I'm not going to do it. Because I'm not going to do it. Lord Leader.
The president, the second reading. I'm not going to do it.
The clerk, the director.
Senate Bill Number 10-181, ST1. Bill for not to amend the fiscal year 2020 national budget to provide the National Scholarship Board with funding flexibility to amend section four of the Cross Act to reduce appropriation to the Ministry of Finance to fund benefits, programs, and services made available pursuant to section three of that act. To enact a continuing budget authority for all regular budget activities of the national government, including supplemental social security benefit payments, appropriations to the Republic of Palau Civil Service Pension Plan, and PPUC Water and Waste Water subsidy. The deadline for the 2020 national budget is to amend the National Scholarship Board and funding flexibility. The section four of the Cross Act. The ministry of Finance, the benefit, the program, the service. The section three, the Cross Act. The continuing budget authority, the 2021. The social security, the benefit payment. The service pension plan, the PPUC Water and Waste Water subsidy. The deadline for the president.
Senator, you're right. Senator Agitaya.
So, Mr. President, I'm not going to do it. The report, I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. Mr. President, I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. Title, the creation of a private wealth banking system. The majority, the senator. They say, "I'm not going to do it." But, Mr. President, I'm not going to do it. They say, "I'm not going to do it." Requirements, the EDB loan. I'm not going to do it. Situation, the budget. I'm not going to do it. But seriously, the Senate. And if you consider, the EDB is a possible solution. The demand, the conditions, the EDB. They say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." Loan, approval of the loan. They say, "I'm not going to do it." I'm not going to do it. They say, "I'm not going to do it." I'm not going to do it. The future finances.
Where is the senator?
The committee, and I'm not going to do it.
Okay, I'm not going to do it. Senator Mario.
The president, I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." 60 million, the funding, 2020, 2021. But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." The loan, the budget. They say, "I'm not going to do it." The revenue, 40,259, including special funds. Already, I'm not going to do it. 15 million, a transfer fund. 10 million, a corporate loan. 20 million, a loan. They say, "I'm not going to do it." The NHI, 970,000. They say, "I'm not going to do it." Continuing budget. They say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." Social programs. They say, "I'm not going to do it." Including executive runs. They say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." Continuing budget. They say, "I'm not going to do it." But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." The source of the budget, 2021. The revenue, the loans, 15 million, a transfer fund. The NCD fund. They say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." I'm not going to do it.
So, President. Senator Quartey.
So, President, I'm not going to do it. 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 Economic, the economic group. The other, the economic. And if you say, "I'm not going to do it." I'm not going to do it. The president, I'm not going to do it. 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 The economic package, the population. I'm not going to do it. Because I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." If we're really serious. So.
Senator. Senator Inavo.
Mr. President, I'm not going to do it. Mr. President, I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to clarify, the loan. The 60 million dollars loan. They say, "I'm not going to do it." The Ministry of Finance, the loan agreement. The total 20 million. I'm not going to do it. The 20 million. And if you say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." And, Mr. President, I'm not going to do it. They say, "I'm not going to do it." But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." And I'm not going to do it. The money. They say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." But if you say, "I'm not going to do it." I'm not going to do it. They say, "I'm not going to do it." 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 And they say, "I'm not going to do it." External debt strategy. They say, "I'm not going to do it." I'm not going to do it. And, Mr. President, they say, "Tax regime." They say, "Tax system." They say, "Fit." I'm not going to do it. They say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." They say, "I'm not going to do it." Eh, girel contingent liabilities, sel gida, m'ngirel dal', s'ed'el mo address. Eh, eh, girel dal'mo, oh, dim'ok'te'agid'el plan, eh, girel rogu'ye, state-owned enterprise, sel gida, PPUC, PNCC, BSCC, pension plan, social security. Eh, girel rogu'ye, eh, state-owned enterprise, eh, girel m'ur'ang'ar, al'sel, te'agid'el plan. Eh, m'rag'ong'e, President. Eh, girel dal'mo complete, ra expenditure review, eh, mo identify, eh, girel specific areas, ra'ab'el mint, eh, n'se'ed'el m'ong'ari'ak cost savings, sel gida, r'ingi. That means, eh, ngirel dal'mo kat'ab'be'bir, eh, expenditure, ra'ab'el mint, te'agid'. Ma, eh, g'agid'el rogu'ye, eh, girel dal'gut'mak'la, eh, m'rag'ong'e, eh, eh, m'iramdal ol'bi ra'alu la, eh, k'da, gut'mak'la, eh, gala. Eh, s'agid'ya, n'ng'amos'ep'ed'el m'use'el, eh, kot'el twenty million. Sel lu'er'ab'od'ola, eh, eh, sel se'gan'el twenty million. Eh, ngirel m'la'pas'ay, g'al'rog'ul m'ola. At the same time, eh, Mr. President, eh, ter'quire, gida rul'ya'la, eh, girel la private-public partnership framework. Bal'gulak'mula, la'se, mo'ya' airport, eh, girel rul'ya'la, la'se, k'da m'ak'ar'ang, eh, eh, mo'tel open, ra'ab'el mint, te'agid'le, m'mobato'ha services, sel provide, eh, awa'y, sel, eh, private-public partnership, eh, eh, man'it'ra airport, te'agid'. Eh, girel dal', eh, implement, k'da mo'ot'tu'ti, sel international arbit- arbitration law. Eh, girel dal'implementer, sel corporate registry. Eh, Mr. President, eh, sel public-private partnership, eh, girel dal'identify, eh, girel rogu'ye, n'se'ed'el mo, oh, ng'ars'agid'el, eh, public-private partnership. Eh, select, eh, girel gombali. Eh, mo, om'ru'la, eh, girel ur'yor. Eh, m'rag'ong'e, eh, gutmakli' sel mechanism, eh, mo'se'el, monitor, eh, regulate, eh, girel public-private partnership, eh, entity, sel gida, eh, gut'mak'la. Akmal go'ya, eh, gang'eh. Eh, Mr. President, la'ik'ad'ya kal, al'ak'ad'kat'mak'la, eh, gang, n'de'kal'se'ed'el, m'ut'ya'la loan. M'ang, eh, g'ad'ya'del, we have been struggling, eh, gora, te'at' tax reform, eh, g'eg'eder, ab'od'au sa'ad'er, n'ngi, eh, it'ol' ol'bi ra'alu la, n'ngi'ul' m'ra'ul'la, eh, gutmakli' committee report, eh, kli'ab'lu'bel'la, eh, ul'mer'alu la, la Senate, eh, din'hal'pas' la Senate. M'la'ng'song'se'rawan, r'sen'kyo. Akte'w'ais'ert'ang'ya, Mr. President, l'anso'ab'od'ong'ela, la'se'ng'maring, eh, ab'od'olar, sel forty million, eh, loan. Bat'oh, eh, negative loan covenants, eh, l'gida, girel, eh, comply with, ngirel dal'mo, ult'ira'kl. M'ang, n'tal'eg'ib'ra independence, eh, te'al'blu'wa, mangay, eh, more e'ong'ela entity, eh, l'gida, amal'erte'al loan, r'ingi. Mo'd'ak'sel, la'se'k'mama independent, te'blu'ul, sa'mal'mak'ram'mak'ram'mak'ram. Leng, eh, g'ar'rog'ya necessary, ngirel dal'm'ru'la, leng, girel make sure, n'se'ed'el, k'ak'ha'ay, al'bal'set. M'ang, yes, al'tak'du, la'se'k'ang, n'se'ed'el dele'ap payment, ra'loan, eh, la'ang, one year, two years, n'dis'el time, al'amey, eh, l'girel dal'm'kat'ay, eh, g'ar'rog'ye, eh, g'agid'el rogu'ye, eh, girel dal'comply with. Ma, ak'tis'ok'ab'ol, eh, al'blak'tak, la'se'ng'ng'ar'ang'el conditions, eh, girel m'at'mur'el'el, eh, mos'ep'ed'el, m'use'el forty million dollar loan. Eh, l'sum'ang mo'd'ak'ang, n'se'ed'el comply, eh, n'la'mo'dak'se'ed'el, m'ut'ya'la du'auz. And then, we have other issues, eh, faced with, eh, more severe, eh, revenue shortfall, eh, Mr. President, k'msula, ak'te'ali'ak.
S'ula, eh, Senator Inabo. M'arriya, m'ut, Senators, k'om.
President, k'mal mas'aura. S'era, om'goda du'ul, la'se'ng'mar'alela ol'bi ra'alu la'ul'osi, au douz. Which is'ing, m'ral'to'oi, ng'ar'led'el'osi, au douz, mo. Ak'ti, il'al tut'awen. Ar'ad'ra, m'ani'ar'ad'na'ra, radio, la'se, a'ha'usa, ang'ar'ng'ya, eh, blal'lo, b'ti, b'ti g'ringi'el, girel la, au douz. Te'agid'el gaming, eh, Senate, tam'la'org'adi, m'ng'k'im'ra, wuk'im'la'me, se'uk'tar'at'to'oi. N'di, ah, ah, do'osi, au douz, de, President, eh, n'de'ak'la m'ring'la, do'osi, au douz, n'me'ra blu'belau. N'di, g'mes'rigi, de, g'mes'ra blu'belau, m'ab'el mint, ra'blu'belau, et tam'adak'tel mos'ois'ib'ay, gang. Akmal go'ya, leng, il'al, sel di'im'ora, as'or'se, eh, Senator Shin, n'se'ed'el, m're'ed'el, m'mau'd'au, del girel, n'de'ak'ang'ral, m'tam'ala, al'envarment, te'al'blu, at'gora bang'ing. N'se'ed'el rul'ya, di'mre'ed'el time, eh, k'do'ul'ya, pal'au'g'ab'el mint, central bang'ing. R'el'el amo, n'se'ed'el, ar'ad'el, ol'ab'od'ud'il, me'ldi'waya, la'se'ch'ur'land, m'au'd'ud'il, me' security, te'al'blu. Eh, gida, m'la'oh, eh, girel, oh, oh, l'ngi'le, m'rag'oh, eh, di'reg'el, o'sis'ul'time, eh, gang, eh, du'auz, ah, n'se'ed'el m'le'ng. Akte'w'ais'eg'mes'et'te'al'time, eh, m'me'ed'el wan'man, de, eh, Senator, k'm'ra blu'ra taiwan. Eh, s'agid'ya, k'uls'au'der, n'ngi'ra blu'ra taiwan, eh, g'im'lo'ra, eh, girel rogu'ye, eh, te'alt'ale, la, as'kel'au douz. N'di, eh, al'al'od'am'ring'le, n'de'ak'la n'se'ed'el, m'ra'igel, di'm, di'be'ot. Eh, di'im'ol'be'ot, eh, te'agid'ya. M'ngirel, l'mes'ringi, n'te'alt'ale, la, gora, offshore, offshore, bang'ing, n'di, leng, tel'al, l'ad'el billionaire, ang'ara, blu'ra, eh, g'ar'be'bir, blu'ra, blu'la, especially China. Los'iga, ro'le'el, la'se'ng'mak'ra'u, du'dire, et ol'ab'el'me. Bat'oh, at'to'oi, g'muls'au'de, Senator, eh, girel la blu'bel'au, ma, at, as, as, sina'ma, at taiwan, la'se'ng'ra'u'ul'ng. N'di, eh, reg'ing, gida wuk'm'as'au'du, te'al'budget, eh, l'am'dak'do'au sa'ad'us'ei. Ak'ti, swak'ali, lo'a'se'eg'me'el, s'agid'ya, tra'ak'ot'el, l'bado'la, eh, m're'ed', n'se'ed'el rul'li. N'di, eh, g'mes'eg'me'el, n'de'ak'g'mes'eg'me'el, g'mes'eg'gida, al'ad'el belau, rogu', k'da'm'dak'tel mor'sei. K'me'el, m'ke'gr'el, al'ad'el, l'am'dak'tel mor'sei. N'di, s'agid'ya, eh, kot'el, m're'ed'el, source, l'dob'ring'ans', n'se'ed'el, help, regid'. N'di, eh, m'ol, eh, eh, di'm, b'ol' materialist, te'al'to'oi. N'di, one, l'al'ad'el, me'la'au'd'auz, l'm'ar, let's say, five hundred million. Tel'ah, ten percent, ra, five hundred million. Fifty million, gom'ur'ge, that's only one time like this, eh, gom'ur'au'd'auz. Di'k'me'ak'g'mes'eg'iding, k'da'm'dak'tel mor'eg, k'da'm'lo, k'da'm'dak'tel mor'explorer'eg. Ah, number two, eh, te'agid'at'to'oi, l'dil'ur'ng'ak'mak, k'ku'a'se'eg'me'el, m'k'mo'me. Tabay'bag'ik'la, la'uk'm'ad'ul'iti, al'to'oi, President, ah, Senate. Eh, am'om tok'ort'iam, blu'ram'rigel. Se'ya, se'ak'ringar'til'et, blu'ram'rigel, eh, n'de'ak'la, sorry, m'sabi'la, la'm'ut'ok'au'd'au, r'ingi. N'de'ak'la, sorry, m'sabi'la, la'm'ut'ok'au'd'au, r'ingi, oi. Sorry, di'control, eh, gida, l'direk. M'ang, n'de'kal, girel, l'mes', eh, g'agid'ya. Ak'ti, swak'ali, mo'tel, repeat, eh, giret'to'oi, blak'tut'el, la'se, te'al ADB, te'al ADB, te'ak'val'ira, s'ya'val. Eh, gang'ah, r'el'el, m'ng'ab'ula, eh, g'agid'el blu'ra, micronisa, eh, g'agid'el, m'ke'gr'el blu'. M'g'da'm'ut'el, g'ib'el, g'rigit'la, ol'ak'pl'ol', la'se'bo'm'g'rigit'la. M'g'da'm'g'rigit'la, girel, te'al ADB, l'm'k'te'et, eh, nd'rad'el, oh, n'ra blu'belau. Eh, n'de'ak'la, sa'ad'el mor'sei, egid'. Do'osi, au douz, l'me'm, di'lgida, l'oru', oru'ur'tel, te'al'blu', la'g'do'osi, eh, im'ra blu'le'me'm, do'mal'se'rigi, r'ingi, eh, in'ab'oy, lo'g'ida, eh, s'agid'at'te'ale, te'ale, la'se'gida, n'de'ak'la, al'sons'ang'el blu'. Te'annation, te'ah, Republic of Palau Independent Nation, k'msula.
M'arriya swat musi, sel girel te'al bill, ra'era, da, move forward, Senator, eh, gire'ab'ang'la?
S'awrata, eh, Mr. President, ak'ra'mle, m'titul'mo'du, am'dul'va'se, m'sa'ad'el girel te'al bill, actually, nam'otul Senators, m'gau. Ah, m'sa'ad'el girel te'al private bang'ing, m'ma, ba'di'kut'el, te'al, eh, update, r'igid'el, la'se'ngirel gir. Then, it's tied to this bill.
Okay.
Eh, te'al, l'udas m'ola, eh, m'ral'ng'ino'a, committee, ra'October. Eh, it actually had a meeting with Financial Institutions Commission. Eh, mnot'rog'ok'rs'el time, la'se'k'da'm'g'be'ot, eh, n'de'ak'la m're'ed'el, to'oi, dor'ur'ing. We need technical expertise, so, n'dis'wak'ali, lo'a'se, la'se'ng'ani'at, technical expert on board. El'el alt'aim, l'mes'ala, Ra'uk Islands, Singapore, if I can pronounce it correctly, Gurs- Gursni, ra, al'sela United Kingdom, m'gora, wal'se'pret'el partner, r'ingi. Al'm'ru'ra, similar type of financial institutions, like private wealth management institutions, m'ma. Ad'swak'ad'ul'ya, s'et'el ur'yor, ra'ng'gal'be'ot. It takes time, but we do have a consultant on board now, thanks to the Ministry of Finance, ma Financial Institutions Commission. Eh, actually, g'me'gau'ing'era last week, l'ng'k'ramle, swat'la'insight, la'se'ng, what direction do you want me to, m'ma, ur'yor, m'rae. M'mot'od'ra next week, I don't think so, n'di, ur'yor, m'rae. Se'ya, se'ak'la, di'update, r'igid'el, m'ms'awrata, eh, Mr. President.
S'ula, Senator, eh, gire'ab'ang'la, Senator Senior?
Eh, Mr. President, k'mal mas'ara, at'ial, Mr. President, ak, eh, ak'mal'ap'kan'mul, la'se, s'agid'ya, l'oku'al' med'ol, eh, l'gida, amal'ap'kar'eg, eh, ak'mo, wa'kripita'g'el, l'dil'ong'ah, Senator Inabo. Eh, n'de'ak'la, garant'ide, la'se'dom'ung'ul. M'ang, that's why, m'ring'el, it's hard to make, eh, eh, girel decisions, eh, girel te'al budget, l'nti'ak'la, blak'tak'la, la'se'n, s'ed'el m'ung'se'ul'auz. Kida, m'ing'ad'ad'ua, Minister of Finance, ng'ar'ngi'eh, girel, girel dal', eh, legislation, eh, di'introduce. Di'ul'la'se, oh, n'se'ed'el m'use'el, eh, first, eh, trans, eh, twenty million, et'som'k'm'introduce, eh, gang. Ngirel la, public, eh, private-public partnership framework legislation, ng'idi di'introduce, m'bo'lo'ng'eg, m'ul'la'se, eh, g'agid'el, ma, m'last'arta, au're'el. Eh, eh, di'reg'el, girel, eh, international arbitration, corporate registration legislation, ma'igay, gida, m'ngirel dal'submit. Kida, te'al'ng'ad'ad'ua, du'ort'te'al, lik'ar'ah, bang'ing, eh, la'titu'ak'la. M'ang, ado'ak'mula'sad' m'ng'at'twenty million, eh, di'introduce, eh, g'agid'ya, eh, legislation, eh, g'agid'ya, condition, eh, girel dal'gut'mak'la, n'm'use'el, eh, first, eh, eh, twenty million. To get the second twenty million, to make up the forty million, eh, m'la'm'girel dal'gut'mak'la, eh, g'agid'ya, eh, m'la'm'ola, m'la'girel sa'ing, ah, President, ra, a republic, eh, m'ola, private-public partnership, international arbitration, and corporate registry, m'la'm'ola. M'ntal'eg'ib'el, eh, kak'ab'os', at'to'oi, l'dol'go'ye, ah, do'as'ei, pe'ered'ong'ut'iang'el, lud'au'de, eh, do'us'pe, n'ngi'ma'bel'se, swan'next, eh, administration, eh, di'ngi'el, m're'ems'ula, eh, girel, mo' agenda, r'ingi, eh, girel, mo' priorities, r'ingi, ma, as'kel'ah, how they're gonna fund, eh, g'agid'el programs, eh, ma'budget. Yet, at the same time, eh, tam'la'ta' himala, an'next, eh, administration, m'so'is'wa. Le'bel'se, swan'ngirel, m'so'is', eh, pas'ra private-public partnership, internal, eh, international arbitration, corporate registry, m'ola, leng, eh, g'agid'ya, wal'conditions, eh, m'ra'igal' loans. M'ang, sel, eh, dud'ul'mul, la'se, eh, kom, kom'ak'ar'ang'ya, eh, et'mula'se, you're happy, kom'kat'at'budget. N'de'ak'la, s'agid'ya, ah, the happy, blak'tak'la, is'ra'blu, eh, situation that we're in. Girel, eh, sel, dud'reading, m'mak'ng'ara, tal'abil, l'm'ara page. Tu, eh, second page, eh, eh, second reading, gomi, eh, kida, ng'ara, tal'abil. Eh, blak'tak'la, eh, changes, eh, l'g'agid'el underline, eh, bod'or'ul. Eighty-five percent, eh, level appropriation of fiscal year 2020, eh, m'ra'igel, eh, regular budget activities, international government. Eh, judicial branch, Ministry of Education, Ministry of Health, Ministry of Justice, amal'm'ol'el, ng'ara, ninety-five percent, eh, level appropriation. And then, ah, mo, m'lu'ul'girel, sup- supplemental social security, ma, eh, civil service pension plan. Eh, g'agid'ya, eh, girel kuk', as policymakers, eh, l'm'la'dis'aid'el, la'se, te'agid'la, a'rail bod'ogi'ngi. Mak'ti, swak'ali, mo, m'el'ak'li'el, la'se, n'de'ak'la, blak'tak'la, la'se, m'ung'se'el, ku'al' million, eh, loan. There are conditions to it, m'se'agid'ya, ul'mak'ti, m'swak'ali, mo, o'ti, s'agid'ya, kuk'ka, ul'dos'we, eh, ma, ul'do'mak'se'port, eh, te'agid'ya, l'ong'erul, l'm'ing'ewel'te'al Senate Bill, 10-181, S1. S'ula, Mr. President.
Senator Clay?
President, n'di, swak'ali, mo'mention, la'se, eh, eh, girel terms and conditions, r'te'al loan, ra'ADB. Eh, g'eh, eh, g'ar'rog'ye, eh, g'eh, ah, mal'us'pe, blu'bel'au. N'de'ak'im'ong'il'mak'nit. N'de'ak'la, swak'se'ed'bert'ang'el, du'be'bir, ah, la'se, t'mo'us'pe, l'control, blu'ad. Eh, ADB, n'de'ak'la, intention, r'ingi, m'se'el, m'mes', eh, girel loan document, eh, n'de'ak' intention, r'ingi, mo' control, blu'bel'au. N'de'ak'la, s'ed'bert'ang'ya, eh, do'od'au'ul, wa'y s'agid'le, l'mak'tak'tar'ad'el, la'se, eh, gang'ah, mot'om'el'ida, ta'kl'ob'sei, eh, t'mo'control, blu'ad. Di'reg'anga professional, eh, agencies, eh, la'se'ya'va, in'bo'el, b'ringi'el, eh, formal, n'de'ak'la, n'se'ed'el, wa'y s'agid'ya. N'se, al'sum'ong'so'ong'ig'ad'm'ung'uy, eh, g'agid'el, loan document, l'oto'p, eh, m'mo'blak'tak'la blu', al'ad'el blu'bel'au, la'se, eh, gang'ah, m'ra'le jet, eh, eh, agencies. Di, s'agid'ya, President, n'de'ak'la, n'se'ed'el, la'se, di'reg'anga, us'us'pe, eh, g'ala, m'skida, r'tak'tar'sei, eh, t'mo'control, blu'ad', l'me'ed'el, wa'blu'ra, swina. N'de'ak'la, wa'y s'agid'ya, blak'ar'del'el, eh, ADB, m'ng'la'g'da bert'ang'el, do'od'au'ul, m'at'tak'tar, s'ula, President.
Dire'iam?
S'ak'yo.
Sum'om, dire'iam, eh, tir'ger'rog'ye, l'ong'er, te'al Senate Bill Number 10-181, ra, ongerul, om'ing'ewel, du'oi.
Oi.
Om'tok?
Oi.
Nam'g'ay? Eh, ang'ar'ng'ya, ang'ar'ng'ya, om'tok? Lo'led'el.
Vo'che, President, eh, m'muwan, m'ra, thul'led'eh, ang'ar'ng'sel, bill, ang'ar'ng'ite, ng'ap'edi'wan, l'ul'ote'ah, President, l'me, ma, eh, god'k'wam'na'ad'ul, ma'k'm'ul' different actions, te'al, l'bill, te'al.
Si'damotion, nam'dong'e second, m'tir'ger'rog'ye, l'ong'el, du'oi, om'tok? Nam'g'ay? Lo'led'el.
Lu'ban'm'ra, resolution, kar'ind'el, President, m'ang, ak'ng'it'el, sel, eh, ang'ar'is'el, eh, Senate Joint Resolution, m'ara, sel referal. Eh, ak'ng'it'el, n'me'm, de, n'de'ak'di, da, di'fer'ingi, ma, next, l'dem'ass'ion, eh, l'war'ad'option.
Eh, di'ger'rog'ye, l'ong'el, di'fer'action, r'te'al resolution, r'du'oi.
Oi.
Om'tok? N'de'ak'om'tok? Nam'g'ay? Lo'led'el.
Et'vor'ah, ad'option, eh, President, ma, m'mu'da, v'ol'se'ed'el, l'ong'er, sel, confirm, confirming, ra, re'appointment, ra, Mr. Brian Malire, mo'da'law'ra, ra PPUC.
Si'damotion, nam'dong'e second, ma, Senator, eh, Agitaya?
S'ula, eh, Mr. President, eh, m'ali, n'di swak'ali, mo, m'ot'ak'li, eh, asset statement, eh, l'til'il, girel, ng'ar'ub'ak'ah, Mr. Malire, eh, s'era, t'ang'ara report.
resila dangarar airport. Ndakumto ra Brian Malirel mortial board. Kumto bebir atokoi ngi ah involbrngi, enditiyidak support ra Mr. Malirel mortial ldroal, ling he is the only one elsel mo kataklayigar rogultokol mergid elsedal mo understand. Esabel kanvinser gid, el musel orar ngi, amal mal talgirel belaw oldiraq ngi. Tiyo sisuyult time, he's one of the few elsel rongsid. Edirekal one of the few sabel gid change ra position ngi, ra bebir atokoi. Nsokawol blak takmasing ngakal Agitaya, mal diakal sabegal bolakulbertian resolution ra Brian. Sular.
Senator Senior.
Mr. President, ak tirikal mal mo swakal oti ayigayigel eh support ngakal ma Mr. Malire. Yakmalamorengal mongadutida koktara, another reason wak support ngi. Uh sera alamera hiring, eh Mr. President, ndakudan trirbebea senators, ndingakadikal koramalasengka sel ngadu odod gide, ngorakmal di. Blak takal mongadu, merasenators, al uldaswe la girela, uh taletele la, orate la, ayigayigel PPUC, maygil issues laveisa PPUC. Eh mang, bebir adal amesa ngalalwaseng koratalgibal disrespectful. Uh yeah, some may even say koraraganta. Ngoradiakal el biscida omul gida aladro olbira kalulaw. Eh nga ke, Mr. President, tabay mesase alwasesea taraw ulengirela Brian Malire, el ngara board da PPUC. Agundaseng segi dia klisi el ah Mr. Malire, ling madenge warerel. Madenge ah, I go back to institutional knowledge. Ayigal malamorengal almost, oko derakal involbraygal urior. Mang sabel disagree laven trirasenators, ekmurasenators alwasay no, that's not how it is. At taletaal ra urior operations awa ngarang. Eh agundas seegi dia amal tara strength ngi, mang girel ngartil board da PPUC. Ling one of the things that we have seen, sel sumo ah, kakuramalang mes, mang madenge ekmulwasay, tiyamtar ulasulandi, tirkal senators, tirkaya confirm, malubetamolchiro, outrabatchetra PPUC, malubeng, tamoldiakal biscida igel funding aldu spe. Eh adamo, adamo mes, emodiakadu igel girel madu. Ngako umralalwasay Mr. Malire, sabel kuma igel alomrang, eng sobakliya operation of PPUC, even when he thinks eh umrangal alwasay, our senators ah diakal loomrarsel, losngil. Mak, aktiswakal mo edal alwasay segida ulmagumrangal alwasay girel ngara board, uh ling diregal sabedel okspengi, al oversight orur tra management, ling ngaria cloud ngirngi, girela taletele ma orate la urior. Makti neswakal mo, uh edanam mulwasay that's another reason, ling hm sabel alopen and blak taklo ay sergi, uh even when dalamlamo olwid as policymakers, as leaders, as people longra artial ligagidale idib, uh ma ending sabel blak takal adodoin. Mlamesangi ma Senator Inabol ngarawaykeke del exchange of ideas, uh eh mak segida ulakmal support ra Mr. Malire. Sular Mr. President ate al.
Sular eh Senator Senior. Senator Kyota.
Siento, ma sular talteala, mariyang sular Senator estamnang mugel, girel malgoy maka moritra flol leadere, onganyawa, lulkiyabla, olitwadida senkyo loba proto.
Si damotion namdunge sek, etirge roguil gongel sel motion oldu hoy. Omtok. Namangai, el akomomrot girela nominee. Congratulations el mora ah Brian, el giret isertel appointment trangi. Senator Mariur.
Veshi devosenex resolution President, ma komu adatrastending senate resolution 10 thus 196, emoganformer Mr. Benjamin Yeob, emoda la Palau Election Commission.
Si damotion namdunge sek, ma Senator Kuarte.
Sular eh Presidente Talteala, akti modulia degidalibl tol girela Mr. Benjamin Yeob, Ben Yeob. Ndasel Presidenta isertel tol alwasen ndiakal sabemen losisakliya, mlamauodel bilis laveisel toy. Ningal, laulakmalgol waise, President, ndirakatalkmitren ayigel adel iwe dyangidil tokor amada. Eh alsumariya honest, aladre blak mitren, he's one of them. Yeah analysis raluswela, mal, mal, malkmol. Hm kmedel alwasel previous, senktoldir gamlomrek. Ah Brian, ah Brian. Benjamin Yeob, ah Benjamin Yeob. Yakumralalwasay, ndakabol change. Ak mal support ra tiyan nominee, liwaisen nomrek, alwasay mari tigel adal, mlamora point raklangar tiyel, amring regidel change seti. They just happen to be honest, Benjamin Yeob atartimak, mal supportetan nomination.
Senator Senior.
Malmasara ate al eh Mr. President, ak tirikal male waysaigel ne reasons wayak, ak kadirikal mal support ra Mr. Yeob, emol mol mangaya Palau Election Commission, tegida kokpa ihis. Mr. President, ngakablon masawda gender equality. Girel ngarangar salmardirat igal board in commissions. El al time eh Mr. President, etete de ardeel, el ngara Palau Election Commission, diaka, diaka aruba kalngar ngi, or diakasal ngar ngi. Ngagidale, Ms. Usluwi, Ms. Rolinda Jonathan, mang kale chepersonamis Beni Pril. Matirka nga, di te de radilamal kulngit, bodongera Mr. Benjamin Yeob, ambol kaldomir, tirkal te de maas. Temabol sabel ngaringi ken gokom, eh nasal ngara isertel kami election, Palau Election Commission. Thank you, Mr. President.
Akshamul mokunges Senator Kyota. Senator Inabo.
Oh Mr. President, hm ndiswakal alwasay kada maluspe era Ben Yeob. Mal magtagtal ngarse, mal lungil orate, mes ayigel batogal mondayer gida tolab al mortial board eh Mr. President, ma mal olngite dongan ngi arusertel blayeta senkyo bayaklamation.
Si damotion namdunge sek, etirge roguil gongel duoy. Omtok, namangai, domrod. Congratulations el mora Ben Yeob, el mora Election Commission Board. Flol leader.
Veshi President, ayigera roguyorelida resolution calendar, item 13, introduction of bills. Item 14, introduction of resolutions. Item 15, Regimes Business Communication, mangari ngi gel, umtabekrala note, ayigel Regimes Business Communication 10 thus 954, el mora 10 thus 966. Edmuban, item 16, Regimes Business.
Haligon tirasertesis. Flol leader.
Edwar, item 16, Presidenta Regimes Business. Ah diakal, lakamis Regimes Business, edmuban mora announcement. Edwar, ulgol eh President, nama komu badongalit alblain mon mutraklura tuoklak.
Si damotion namdunge sek, etirge roguil gongel duoy. Omtok.